Howdy, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. Today is Tuesday, July 12th, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. There is a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into the executive session in the first-floor conference room, which is closed to the public. At the end of the executive session, I will come out and announce that we're open to work session, and the public will be invited to that if you will give us a few minutes. Thank you very much. Howdy. Once again, we have adjourned from executive session, and we are convening into work session in the first-floor conference room. The time is 6:00 PM. The public is invited and welcome to join us.
I was, when I had it, was fatigued, like horrible fatigue.
Did you have it for like a day or two?
I had it for a week. And then my, and then my loss of taste has been six months. That's the worst.
You know, I worked for more than, in fact, I've been in more hours than I normally do just because I got up out of bed and rolled out and was sitting for the computer at 7:00 and worked until 7:00. Didn't have any losses. Well, I was so lucky. It really was. Of course, I've had every, seen all the shots and all the boosters and...
My wife's, my, my wife's sister tested positive today, and she is like freaked out, like she, like she was pregnant during COVID and like during 2020, so like real like, she tested positive. Her husband is in the northeast right now on a job, and so...
Yeah.
Number E.
We have a whole house today.
All right, everybody, let's get, uh, let's get started here. The time is 6:02. We're in a work session of the Capella City Council. We have six items to cover today. Item A is a discussion of the budget, or the agenda items. Anybody have any questions or comments on the agenda? Bijou.
Just a question on number, I don't know, Agenda Item B, uh, Concern Agenda Item B.
B is in Boi?
Yeah.
Kim?
Yes.
So we are amending in ordinance, October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2022.
So this is the, um, it's, it's what we normally do every year. We bring forward an amendment to the budget that you passed last year for the encumbrance carryovers that we do, and then anything that council has passed up to date that's been brought forward to you. So this is something that we do every year. It's just to get the paperwork that you have done to match what we put into our system.
But you will be discussing the details?
Um, it's on consent, is my understanding, because it's routine in nature, so.
If you would like to hear, she can certainly go over it now for you.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? I did have a, on number 11 and 12, this is the library board. This was a long debate with Bob and so forth. We think that the cleanest way is to remove the member, and then if it is the wishes of the council to reappoint him, that will be your discretion. But since the charter says that he's got to be removed, it's your vote that has to do it. The other option was to have him, have the item to remove him, and you vote against it, and then we weren't really sure what happened at that point. So we're putting an item into reappointing. If you voted not to remove him, then by charter, he's vacated, but not by your vote. So it was kind of, kind of gray. We thought this was the cleanest way.
Yeah, I was gonna say, whatever, whatever he recommend, and that's Bob.
Yeah. Mayor and council, I didn't just what Mayor Mayes is referring to. Specifically, your ordinance says you missed 25% to 3%. The position is to be declared vacant. The only way that the council can declare a vacancy is by your action. So to me, this is a ministerial duty that you have to enforce the ordinance that you have written, that that member, since we, we'll get into this later in the work session, talking about attendance policy, but right now, we don't have mechanism to excuse an absence. So having said that, what we would do then is perform this ministerial act to declare a vacancy. And I think that there was some concern that the member did have a circumstances which led to his non-attendance. And therefore, you could obviously, and there's nothing in the ordinance or in the charter that would force you to reappoint them at your discretion. So that's basically what we're doing, is performing the ministerial act, which regarding the first agenda item, regarding the library board. And then that is the expression to reappoint them. That is your desire, feel, the member is willing to be reappointed, of course.
Thank you, Bob. Brianna?
So we can either reappoint the person, or we can appoint one of the alternates?
That, they serve at your discretion, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Yes, your honor. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other items on the agenda? All right, moving on. Item B is a presentation by the YMCA and discussion of service organization request. Willie Lees is, is up.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to get on. Appreciate the mayor and the council and the staff for the opportunity to, to ask for your support once again and work together. Here we go. I have a few slides to share to kind of go through. I wanted to share in depth a little bit more about the YMCA and what we're doing. Hopefully, it'll answer some questions as we go through along the process. My name is Willie Lees. I'm the vice president of operations, and I serve here at the branch in Capella. And I wanted to kind of share a little bit about our mission and who we are. So the YMCA, we're a nonprofit organization. Sometimes we, sometimes our staff forget that, and our members forget that, and our community forgets that. I just want to make sure that was clear, and that's why we're here today, asking for your support. The Capella Y has been here since 1986. The facility opened in 1999, and then we've gone through an expansion in 2002. And then over the last year, we've gone through expansion process as well. So that's kind of where we are today. Including a few pictures of who we are. This was taken from the city website, just a little bit of the demographics that, as we kind of married those up to who we are as an organization. And I wanted to share this one. This is our most recent demographic report for the YMCA, who we are serving our families. As you can see, the member age on the bottom right-hand corner. As we look across the Y's, this is a very well-balanced YMCA as far as members, seniors, and young folks as well. Females are always a little bit, slightly more mixed than male typically. But we have 4,000 members, and those are 1,700 units as of today. So that kind of gives us a little scope of where we are. We're about 75% almost of where we were before COVID hit. So that's kind of the folks coming in out of the door, who are members and participants. Our programs are at a higher level than our membership, though. We're actually exceeding the 2019 numbers through our after-school programs, summer camp programs, swim lessons, sports. It's been tremendous for us to get back to that level. And I want to share this, here's a heat map. I remember from the process, there was questions about how many Capella residents we're serving. Here's a heat map of the folks that we serve at our YMCA as members. 91% of our members are residents of Capella, and 82% of our program participants are residents of Capella. So those are the folks that we're serving. And I mean, program participants, anybody who's in a after-care program, summer camp, takes a swim lesson, whatever it might be, plays a sport. So 91% of our folks live in the community that are members of our Y. Don't want to forget the cute kids and their dads, because that always helps. Here's our adventure guys program. For anybody who's been to Camp Grady Spruce, you know where that hike is right there. That's a pretty cool, cool spot. Here are some of the programs and services that we offer. I won't go through them all, but I wanted to kind of share a little bit, a little bit of all the things that we do outside of being the, just the place to workout. More cute kids playing soccer there. And here's something, is the YMCA, we work closely with a lot of organizations. ISD is one that we're, we work critically with. We're the home to their swim team. All of our sport programs take place at the ISD, as well as our after-care and summer camp program. Claymore Operations is a military nonprofit organization we partner with, and there's a few others that you can see there as well. And then the highlighted programs and services down at the bottom. I wanted to note the YMCA College Scholarship Program. So we have three of our graduating seniors here at Capella that were awarded scholarships. Two of them received $8,000 scholarships, and one received a $12,000 scholarship. And that's for all of the Dallas area, and only 20 of those scholarships are given out. So that's just some of the programs and services that we do. So to kind of give you a little background and get to why we're here, we've requested a $30,000 grant support from the city. $20,000 that continued into our general programs, and $10,000 directed to our childcare-specific programs, our after-school and summer camp. And the Y has been generous, I mean, excuse me, the city's been generous to support the Y with $20,000. And last year, we asked for $10,000 for our after-care program. We know that was a one-time request. Due to our continued demand, our growth in our after-school and summer camp programs, extended expenses that go along with that, we're exceeding our expenses, our revenues with our expense this year. So we've, we wanted to see if the city would consider that support again for the extra $10,000. So I'm happy to answer any questions after giving a little bit of background and hopefully get a little bit more specific.
Brianna?
Can you go back one slide?
Sure.
And get to see, thank you for being here. Quick question on the partners, just because I've taken advantage of some of your different programs.
Yes.
Y'all used to do one with Baylor that was to help with, like, obesity with children. It may have been before you came over, I think it was before you came over from Capella. Y'all still doing that one at all?
We did, not, not currently.
Okay.
But we're, some of the programs and services before COVID, we haven't brought back somewhat, like Lift Strong, that you're familiar with, is a program that we're trying to get back as well.
Okay. And I was just looking at that one, because that was one where children would come, and, and their families would learn about obesity. But then you would also offer the family, like, three months at the Y at no cost, so that they could get back into, or they could start to live a healthy lifestyle.
Yes, we do have a program like that called Get Up and Go. And then maybe that original partnership with Baylor where we do offer that program.
Perfect, thank you. And then now in the numbers, just so that I understand, since I wasn't here at the last meeting, for the next slide.
Sure.
So you're asking for 30. 20 is, so I think, is that what we gave last year as well? What, we did a one-time 10, we did the 20?
Yes.
Okay. And so that kind of what you're wanting again is the, you normally do 20, but you're asking for a one-time 10? Or are you wanting a, a 30?
Just like you said.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because the, the extra 10 is really directed, we direct that specifically to our summer camp and after-school program. Our, our fall numbers for after-school has grown by 50%. What we're going to enroll this year versus what we enrolled last year.
And so then you would reevaluate that, because you may not need it next year. So it's more of a, this is kind of where we're at, we need an extra 10?
Absolutely.
Kind of just get us here.
We appreciate the generosity and partnership, but we don't want to take advantage of that at the same time.
Okay. Thank you.
So curiosity, is the increase in, in after-care that you're seeing this year, is that due to the reduced numbers that were caused by COVID? Or is it just a growth in the program?
Probably, we've, we're starting from that reduced number. We really have capacity for probably five times what we have in the schools itself. But as, as folks have started to come back, that's where we're seeing the growth. As they get more comfortable with being in this, in this space, and they're going back to work, that's, that's where we're seeing the growth.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
John? So I know Don brought this up, which is a good point, that last year, when you applied and asked for $10,000 for a one-time as a grant, wasn't there a, I guess, some sort of a plan that this is a one-time grant moving forward? How are we going to support this if it does continue on? What was, what was the plan at that, at that time?
So...
You're coming back with another one-time grant again?
Sure. And that, and that's a great question, and we kind of debated that internally, but the amount of growth and some of the, some of the direction from the school system that we, we met with Superintendent Hunt and, and got some direction on how we wanted to be representative of the community. So some of the things we're doing in these programs, providing different curriculums, added expense, our labor costs of added, we've just seen a growth in expense as well as a demand for the program. So that's where we said, if, if the council would consider it, we wanted to ask for that again. And we understand if that doesn't fit the budget, if that doesn't fit aligned with the values, we would completely understand that. But we want to at least present it and make our case.
How many, I guess, that was specific for childcare-specific programs, you said, right?
Yes.
So how many kids did that actually cover?
So for this past year, let me, let me just make sure I got the right number. I don't want to get corrected on the wrong side of that. We had 1,700 unique kids in our after-school program. And this summer, we have over 240 kids per day. So that 1,700 unique kids, we're projecting to be about 50, 50% greater than that. So we should see about 2,600, 2,700 is what we're projecting for following enrollment.
And if the grant is not provided, then, then what's the plan?
We're going to work to find some funds somewhere. We're not going to, we don't turn away people for need. We find a way to make it work. Kids will not be turned away from our after-care or summer camp for need.
Mayor, do you mind if I, oh, go ahead, Mark.
Mark?
Can you go into a little bit more detail about the expanded curriculum that, that you're offering?
Yeah. That's a good question. I'll give you an example. So we, we stopped our, we did some light cooking and food preparation programs after-school. When we came out of COVID, we stopped that. And working with the school district, what we're trying to do now is lean towards more STEM programming. So that's a little bit more cost, greater cost than it is preparing food. And we're doing that in a direction and in partnership with the school. But, so that's a little bit of expense that we hadn't had in the past. But we, we want to make sure that we're reflective in that way. And that seems to be the demand from the community as well, is to have that STEM programming.
Yeah, and I was looking for ways to support the, the district, so it seems like a money-well spend.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Oh, I had another question. Does this, does CISE provide any funding at all? I'm just curious.
They don't provide any direct funding at this time. But we do have that agreement where we share facility resources.
Agreed, yeah. My children have done that.
Yes.
So that's super helpful. But then the other question I had too was, um, last year, we had the 20 and 10. Was it, was the split the same as far as general 20,000 and 10,000 for childcare?
Yes.
As what you're doing now? Okay. So the 20,000 has never been for, used for childcare?
Not, not, not specifically. And last year, when we, we applied, we, we asked for specifically coming, kind of coming back from the COVID situation. So that was a little bit unique last year. We've never asked for that specifically, no.
Okay.
20,000 had been asked the year, year prior.
Okay. And then the last question I have for now is, um, I know y'all have your call campaign.
Yes.
Has that been...
Our annual support?
Your annual support, right?
Yes.
Has that been relatively steady? Are y'all seeing a decrease? Like, where does that sit?
Yeah, we have seen a decrease, um, last year to this year, about 12%. Prior to COVID, it's about 25% decrease in, in donations and gifts for...
Because that's all used for a lot of these same buckets, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Kevin?
25% reduction. Can you give me a close estimate on what that real number is?
So, yeah, so this year, our goal is 120,000. We, except 12,000 or 108 is where we ended up. So before COVID, that'd be 140, I think?
Gotcha.
Don't quote me. Six years ago, we've raised over 200,000, between 225,000 about six, five or six years ago. Thank you.
Mark?
Just a question to, to you and the staff.
Yeah.
Since it, you know, the, the giving has been obviously caused by COVID, can we use ARPA funds?
That is a doggone good question.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing.
I, I'm seeing...
It would be eligible.
I'm seeing a nod, yes.
Social service. So we could. No, we'll say that'll be a, we, we would need to come back and have a follow-up conversation with council in terms of that allocation, knowing that we have, at this point, essentially allocated everything that was provided to us. So we would then have some juggling to do in terms of how you'd like to move some of those funds around. But yes, in terms of eligibility, absolutely.
So the answer is yes?
Okay.
Good question. Brianna?
I guess my question is for like a move forward, are we looking to have that, the conversation now? Or if we're like a yay or nay? Or is this a presentation, and we talk about it later?
Well, we're going to talk about it as Item C right next.
Okay, perfect. That's awesome.
Along with all the other ones.
Along with all the other ones.
Okay, perfect. One, understand. Okay.
Yes. I am, I'm sorry, I'm making sure Mr. Carroll's going to be here.
Oh, you're good. I just, I just wanted to know if we needed to...
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
We've got an item that we think he's going to have to be here for, so he is, he has landed, by the way. Anybody have any other questions for Willie? All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item C is a presentation and discussion regarding the city council budget. I think you can stay around for just a second. Great. We don't want to see you leave until you absolutely have to.
Oh, okay, good.
Kim, did you have a presentation? Tracy? Is it Kim down here?
I apologize for the confusion.
Are you the Kim standup?
I am wearing many untraditional hats, non-traditional hats this evening. So this is kind of a continuation. So Mayor, it's your pleasure. I don't know if you want to move to Item C or go straight into the second part of Item B in terms of the service organization requests, to have that conversation around all the requests, knowing that it is part of your council budget. But the council budget piece, Tamara was going to walk you through your budget a little more specifically, knowing that y'all would have already had the conversation around the service org. So I'll, I'll leave that to your discretion, how you'd like to handle it.
So...
Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
No. You asked, you let me, you, you did, you made me multitask there.
I apologize. What we would recommend doing in terms of the next step is walking through the service organization requests. Allow council to have your conversation around how you'd like to proceed forward from a decision-making standpoint on the funding for the requests that the organizations have provided to you.
And then, then you will do the...
Then we will segue into Item C. So if that is acceptable to the council, that's how we'll proceed. And that is, that will explain my presence at the podium now, if we handle it this way. Otherwise, I will call Tamara to the podium, and she can do Item C.
Okay. So I was clearly wanting to do the service organizations next. So that, I think that was your, I do have one, I do want to say something to, to the group before we get into this. I am, I have never, going back a year or two, I would never have believed that we're going to be in the position that we are in right now. We've been able to increase our senior exemption to $100,000. We've been able to reduce our tax rate down to an all-time low. We went back and looked, the tax rate has never, ever been as low as the tax rate that we are going to adopt this year. And even if it changes a few hundredths of a percent, it's still well below whatever our lowest rate was before. We've been able to reduce the city's spending, and we've been able to accommodate all the outcome of COVID. And this council and our city staff has done a fantastic job of reducing expenses across the city and maintaining our level of service. And just to keep in mind, our current projections are going to show that our average homeowner will save, will pay less in taxes next year than they paid this year. That is a very, very rare occurrence. And when you see the, the amount of, of, just the outcome of COVID and everything that we had to put up with, I think it's just a testament to the fiscal responsibility that, that this council has shown. So from a personal standpoint, thank you very much. And we've got another, you know, we're not done. We've got another, what, six weeks of this stuff to go through. Welcome, Mr. Carroll.
I thought you said you had just landed. I'm like, wow, that's great.
Did they drop you off in the parking?
And so that, my comments apply to everyone except Don, since he's late. But I was, I was congratulating everybody on the, on this astounding budget that is being put before us, that we're going to continue to approve over the next month or so. So it's been a, it's been a fantastic process.
Sounded great. Sounded great. Why don't you repeat it to us?
I'll send him, I'll send him the link of the video.
He can hear it, yeah.
Or from the audio. But seriously, a year ago, I remember I was sitting here thinking that this year, 20, this next year was going to be tough, that we were not going to be in this position. I had no clue. Oh, I didn't even mention 3.334 or Senate Bill 2. So you know, that, we've had a lot of things go against us, and we've done a fantastic job of navigating through it. So thank you for all your work on that, and thanks to the finance department and all the department directors that made it possible. All right, so that. Shall we start at the top of the list?
Yes, I could not have asked for a better segue, so thank you for that. Before we begin, I do want to just pause for a quick moment to allow our... Mr. Long, I think he's got to recuse himself from the service organization conversation.
You just, you just told me I can stop and tell in a while.
I wanted you to hear my speech.
Well, let me tell you, it was just...
At some point, I'm sure.
Mayor, do you want to, do you want me to do the quick intro, and then I will sit aside? Okay, so thank you, Mayor and council. We are at a point where you have now heard all of the presentations from the service organizations who are changing or increasing their requests from the previous year. If you look on your sheet here, that's got this spreadsheet on the request, you'll notice the ones in blue are, are highlighted. Those are the ones that are eligible for hotel occupancy tax funding. I do want to provide one quick update for you related to the Capella... I do want to provide one quick update for you related to the Capel Historic Society request. So the presentation that you heard from Ms. Long on June 21st was, was excellent. And she outlined a robust and a vibrant vision for the next couple of years, both in scope of services and the events that the Historic Society is going to be offering to the community, as well as potential growth in visitors into the Old Town area. So as a result of the, the vision that was articulated during that presentation, we had asked and requested to sit down with Ms. Long and the Historic Society to make sure that we were all on the same page in terms of how, how all of that was going to kind of manifest itself. So we did sit down last Friday with Ms. Long and some various representatives from the departments that helped support the Capel Historic Society. And really, the purpose of that meeting was just to make sure, again, that we're operating from the same place of understanding in terms of expectations and to begin conversations around short and long-term priorities and strategic plan for the Historic Society. So during the course of that meeting on Friday, Ms. Long had identified several items that may impact the council's funding decision for this upcoming year. So I do want to walk through a couple of those things with you. She did identify that they have recruited a volunteer coordinator, and he is volunteer. But he has joined the group and has done a nice job in terms of recruiting new volunteers to participate in some of the activities that the Historic Society is planning to do and currently and for the future. He does have significant experience in volunteer recruitment for some of the tourism events that the City of Grapevine hosts. Ms. Long did indicate that she is committed to seeing this project through. So in other words, she is not going to leave the Historic Society in the lurch, she's not going to leave the community in the lurch, and she's not going to leave the city in the lurch in terms of whether, knowing, having confidence that if the council was going to allocate these funds, she was going to see that through. However, at the same time, she did acknowledge that succession planning is an area of concern for her once she does decide to step aside in terms of her leadership for the group. She did indicate that the moving of the house onto the historic park, historic Heritage Park site is not a make or break proposition for the plans that she had outlined for the council in terms of what is the vision for the upcoming year and the couple of years out. The funding that she is requesting is make or break. So the house is not, the funding is. One of the key things that we talked about during the meeting on Friday was the, the approach that the council has generally taken over a long period of time. Council has always been very planful and intentional around how projects are budgeted and prioritized over time. So to that end, one of the primary discussion points that we had with Ms. Long was around developing priorities, short and long-term, that will help both staff and the council plan resources and budget to support the initiatives so that we can make sure that we are successful together. Frankly, when we walked out of that meeting, we did not have as much progress as I had hoped on that front in terms of the strategic planning and the identification of those short and long-term priorities. However, in the end, we did agree that there should be additional conversations between Ms. Long and staff so that we can better understand where the Historical Society's priorities are for the next couple of years and how we then can plan to support. Ms. Long was very open to that idea of continuing that conversation with us. She does believe that the funding should be allocated as a first step because really, otherwise, there is no need, from her perspective, to develop a long-range plan. So at this point, we're kind of, she described, I describe it as a chicken and the egg situation where council, from our perspective, really needs some more information to understand really what you're committing to from, I know we're asking for a one-year funding, but really, that's to kind of fund what we see the vision for the next couple of years. And the society really needs council to allocate the funds so that there's actually something to plan around because without the funding, we continue in the same scope and scale as we are today. So I want to share with you the couple of takeaways that we had related to that meeting. So the first really is partnership. And we view that partnership working best when we are able to marry the operational expertise and experience that we have at the staff level with the vision that's been shared with us by Ms. Long around what do we want to see from Heritage Park in terms of the utilization. It is underutilized, and I think the vision that she's articulated was support, both bringing folks to Old Town and bringing people to Heritage Park. There were clear benefits after having that conversation last Friday. There were clear benefits, at least in our mind, and Ms. Long, honestly, to having a strategy to incorporate what we're talking about here into our upcoming planning processes. And that will help us answer questions around things like, what are the long-range funding expectations and strategy to reduce city funding? So for example, when we, when the council had all their conversations around the art center, the art center brought a business plan. So the council clearly understood what we were committing to long-term. Like, we understood this is what it was going to be? Okay, we're in on that, we understand what we're doing. So it would help us around those expectations. It would help us around land use planning for potential expansion of additional buildings. It would help us understand how volunteer development and succession planning would work over the next several years. It would help us in infrastructure planning for expanded service offerings that we're talking about over the next couple of years. It would help us understand priorities around capital projects and expansion of tourism opportunities. It will help us kind of vet and understand better what is the appropriate process through which we would consider these requests, whether that's through the park board. Right now, it's ad hoc, so we do not have a, a way in which typically projects would move its way through the priority process. And finally, it would help us answer questions around the budget planning to help support those anticipated needs as we move forward. So really, the outcome at this point from our meeting was that it, I think there's a lot of benefit and we see this as an opportunity to help us plan to be successful. Our current staffing and current budget can support the existing level of service that we have today as it's outlined in our current agreement. The vision outlined for the Historic Society will require additional investment in both time and resources to support those efforts in a manner in which our community really expects. I do want to be clear, so Ms. Long has indicated that they are not asking for additional resources to grow the service offering. So we talk about all of the things that were, were outlined in the presentation. Outside of the ask that is before you in your service organization, she is not asking for additional resources beyond that. However, I will tell you, kind of through our past experience and our professional expertise, we know that there's going to be additional resources that are going to be required. And we would, we would like the opportunity to be proactive around budgeting and planning for those items. So that process and that ongoing dialogue that I think would be beneficial will help afford staff and the council time and information, time to gather the information necessary to be the best partner that we can to serve the community through the Historic Society and Heritage Park. So I know Heritage, the Historic Society is not the only organization that you are considering this evening. It is a large portion, and so I did want to at least provide y'all that context of where we left our meeting on Friday, really with a commitment to just continue having the dialogue so that we can really better understand how we're going to wrap our arms around being successful together, if that's where we'd like to go. So having said that.
Thank you.
I will move along unless y'all have any questions about that specific meeting.
John? If I remember correctly, she mentioned that more likely than not, that with the first grant, by the time it actually ends, they would have a process in place where they probably won't be coming back asking about for the second, second. Is that still the same scenario where she's thinking that that's where it's going to go?
Yes, so that is unchanged. Part of what I think the ongoing conversation that we would like to have is exactly what would that look like? From a business plan standpoint, in year two, what would you anticipate in terms of revenue? How would that be generated? What would you like to see from the city in terms of what are your expectations? And so, yes, she would, she has been consistent there in terms of what her vision would be. Our conversation will really be around almost kind of the nuts and bolts of, okay, let's sit down and talk about how that would happen. What would that look like, so then we can start planning for that?
And, yeah. And I, I, I know you probably don't have the answer. I, I meant to ask her at that time, but the current, I guess, the visitors of the, the Historical Society places and locations, as well as what is the anticipated visitors moving forward with the funding, whether it's from the city or from the state?
Are you asking, is she anticipating additional visitors as a result of having the funding and going through with the museum status? She, we are anticipating, she is anticipating additional visitors. Through the partnership, so if you'll recall back, she, Ms. Long talked about the partnership that she's already entered into with the Dallas Historic Society. Once we have museum status for the store, then that puts you in a separate category from a tourism standpoint that then is highlighted at the state level on their tourism websites. So there is anticipated increased visibility in terms of what kind of marketing will be out there, how we'll be, what we could offer, what those partnerships could be that would result in additional visitors, yes. So that is, that's the anticipation, that's how it was explained in her presentation.
Anybody else? Okay, I think to get through this, I, what I'd like to do is, we're going to take the numbers that are on the requested, and if you guys have concerns or complaints, bring them up and we can discuss the number at that point. What I'd like to do is do the Historical Society first so that we can bring Cliff in for the rest of the conversation. So from a Historical Society side, the request was for 107,197. What's your, what's your thoughts, Mark?
Do you know where our hot tax stands right now in the balance?
So it is for the hotel occupancy tax because they can use 50% of it. It is 400 and... 407,000, curious. 497,754 dollars is available.
So they can use 50%?
Histor, it's for historical, so it can be 50%. So that is the amount that can be used for historical. And that represents 50% of your fund balance. Because it's the, the legislation says that normal, no more than 50% can be used for historical purposes.
50% of the hot tax?
Yeah, of the, of the.
So meaning we have 100,000, 1, what, 1 million?
So we have 831,000.
Oh, you're giving us the amount that can be used, the 400K. Okay, sorry. I was trying to be honest, I was trying to be polite.
Okay.
Yeah, so 20,000 has already been spent on that.
So there's 497,000 that would be available for this purpose?
For historical?
Yes, okay.
The money's there, and there's not many ways that we were able to use that money. The purpose is to encourage tourism.
Brianna?
So I was not here for the presentation, but I did listen to it. Would there be a way for us to do, because you're asking for 107, for us to do, like, give it as it's spent? Kind of like, you get half now and you get half later, just, like, do they, knowing if they'll spend it all? I don't know, we've done that with some others, we've put in some parameters. I don't know.
Grant them 10,000 and then issue an open PO as they spend it?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Or that's not me, that's you.
Well, one of the things that you can do is actually do a grant agreement. And if you do that grant agreement, then you can put the terms and conditions of how the money is allocated, how the money is funded. You can do it all upfront, you can do it in reimbursement, or you can do it based on a kind of contractual obligation. You promised to do this, we'll grant the money.
Thank you, Bob.
There's certainly not kind of grant agreements, but if you're going to go that route with these hot funds, I would certainly encourage us to have a grant agreement so the finance department can satisfy the controller that the money's only being used for the statutory purpose.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, sorry, I was just saying, I was just throwing out the idea, and thank you, Bob, because I thought we had done that once before, but.
Uh, John?
But I think the chunk of most of the money was going to be used to hire someone.
That's correct.
That, so that's going to be needed right away, basically. Because you've got to hire someone to go after the funding.
Okay.
That was, yeah.
Okay.
Kevin?
Yeah, that, John was kind of touching on it. So yeah, the, the big ask was for a full-time staff member and two part-time staff members in the initial presentation. Is that, is that what everybody recalls?
So her presentation had two, the, she clarified that she was only looking for the one part-time.
Yeah, one full-time.
So 107 represents the full-time and then the one part-time. Am I correct on that? Yes.
But in the presentation, she said one full-time and two part-time?
Correct, but she then has.
Clarified, okay.
Yes, so the 107 represents one full-time, one part-time.
So just, my initial thoughts on this is, obviously, we've got money allocated for this. My struggle with, with this was that, the, as, as Tracy kind of highlighted in the presentation, there really isn't a solid plan yet. It, it was, I don't know, it was, okay, if we get the money, then we can go out and identify all of these grants and stuff. And I know I'm kind of summarizing, but normally, like, let's say, staff presentation, for example, it's kind of step by step, this is, this is what we've done, this is where the revenue is going to come from, this, you know, and it's all kind of lined out. And sure, a plan isn't always perfect, but that is my, my hesitation with this is that, is that we're just hearing about this for the first time and they're asking for a full-time staff member and a part-time staff member to then go out and try to get money. And Tracy, maybe you can help me with this. In your meeting with, with Chris, the volunteer that you, that was identified, is that volunteer, what capacity is that person going to serve? I know you said that there was some, they'd done some work in Grapevine and stuff, but what, what does that look like? What are they trying to tap specifically that person to do?
So the only responsibility that Ms. Long discussed at the meeting related to that volunteer coordinator, so it was called a volunteer coordinator, was around helping to recruit some scout troops to help them work the, one of the holiday events.
Okay.
Knowing that they would be able to leverage him for, to help them with volunteer recruitment for additional things. But that was the one piece that.
Okay.
Was discussed during our meeting.
Okay, that's, that's, okay. Excellent. And I, that's just where my, my concern from is, we've got the money. I don't have, I don't have a problem with using the money, what it's supposed to be used for. My, my struggle with this is just the lack of a long-term plan. And it sounds like the meeting that, that city staff and Ms. Long had was productive in that sense, but that's just kind of where I'd go, is that I want to see a little bit more of that vision and particular grants that they're going to try to go after and, and things like that before we start committing big chunks of money to that, so.
Brianna?
That's right, but John, you had your hand up earlier.
No, you can go ahead first, I, I didn't see.
So we, and I, I guess I wanted to answer, so we did something like that with the biodiversity center. I don't remember who was at the table. That, I felt like we asked them to go back and we wanted a, a more thought-out business plan before we allocated funds. So we didn't have an issue with the fact that we had the funding, but we actually wanted to understand that how is this going to be maintained long-term? Because there was the, the ask and the concern was, if you don't have a plan, then this ask is going to continue to come back and increase. So we have done that before, I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah.
John?
No, I, I agree with what you're talking about, but I think when Chris made the presentation, it was my understanding that she actually did the extensive research as to the availability of the funding that once they do hire a person to go after specifically for that purpose, that there was sufficient enough funding there that they don't, they won't need it once that process gets started. That was my understanding. Because I, I, I believe she said that most likely even before the end of the, once they get the funding to hire that person before the end of the year, they're able to go in and get that already in process, that they will have additional funding, that they, that they will no longer leave this kind of grant. Right, so my understanding was that she did extensive research to that there's sufficient funding, but that has to be done, but with a person dedicated going after that. So, and, and I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, your concern, and, and it will be nice, but I, I think that's part of the thing that she was wanting, so that that person who is knowledgeable enough to be able to get all those, go out, you know, make, apply for the grants and funding, all that funding, but she can't have that process until she has the funding for that, to hire that person, to do a full-time work on it, so. I, I, to me, I think, you know, the, the funding's there, and if they're able to, be able to be self-sufficient within, after a year, I mean, this is a great way to enhance Capel, um, as well, and be able to bring, and put, put us in, you know, on the map as well, for people to visit here. So, I, I, I think she has done some research enough that, I don't think she just said it without re, you know, researching it. So I think, I believe that she, she knows that it's there and is available once we get this thing going.
Kevin?
Uh, just a, 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 see, mine, I actually, I, I just had a different takeaway from that. It was more of a, there are things out there that we might be able to tap, and I just, I, those were my interpretations of, of the presentation, so. And I think that that's the, the, uh, the downside of not having that long-term plan, because with specific grants identified, and, and I, I hear, we are kind of in that chicken and the, and the egg type of thing, because I think that she said, what she's saying is, she believes there's stuff out there, but until we hire that full-time person, she can't go figure out and identify exactly the ones. I, I think that, just for me, I would feel better about committing, uh, to the funds if we had just some sort of general idea, like, hey, here's like, you know, three or four grants, and it will generate this much money, and there's more like these out there, just, if there was specifically one that was presented to us that says, hey, I can go out and get this money tomorrow if we invest in this person, and they can go get that grant for us. That's, I think that's where I'm, I'm just getting hung up on this. Is that, it just wasn't really a, a concrete enough plan, like, the, the packet that she gave us was just kind of a general, general information, and then some specific stuff about like, how increasing, you know, how, you know, being on this, you know, increases tourism or whatever, and which is fine, and I want that, but I would really like to see it fleshed out a little bit more, and see more of a long-term plan.
Are we able to give her two weeks before the next meeting to see if there's?
I was gonna ask him that, yeah, if, if we had, can we do this at a later time?
We've been really asked to get this done tonight.
Okay.
Mayor, if I, if I might again, to maybe help push this along for you, this is the budget process, so if you commit the funds through the budget, it would be subject to a grant agreement, and that's where the details would come in. They shouldn't spend this money, they can't spend this money until October first, so. Uh, because that shouldn't be the budget. Now, I know we got the funds now and we could sign a grant agreement, but maybe what you really, what I'm hearing from you all is, we don't have enough detail. Everybody likes the idea of submitting the funds from a budget, and then we come back and bring a grant agreement with you with particulars in it, and then that would give the Historical Society uh, time to maybe get some more details for you and, and the rest of the council, and then sign that grant agreement in the future. But we would know that we would commit X amount of funds for that purpose, so that they would have some assurance that we would undo it and we come back with a grant, and that's just by way of suggestion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I guess the, my opinion is, I'm not opposed to the idea, but to me, it's uncomfortable that this is coming before the council. Normally, this would come to us during our budget planning session, and after it's been vetted and reviewed, in this case by the Parks and Rec Board and, and by the Parks Department. So I almost feel like we're bypassing our, our own processes by, by considering this firsthand. I, and, but then I'm not opposed to it, it's just like we've kinda short-circuited the, the process a bit.
I, I'd love to know your thoughts on that.
Sure, um, so I was gonna say, so this has not traditionally come through the Parks and Recreation Board, Heritage Park is actually not designated parkland. Uh, up to this point, the Parks Department has just maintained the grounds, irrigation, you know, road and edge and such, and then we've become the liaison to the Historical Society, but since this, this land is not parkland, it has not been under the purview of the Parks and Recreation Board up to this point, so that is not a mechanism in which we've been able to discuss Historical Society planning, requests, et cetera.
Thank you, I did not realize.
I neither, but I was reading your face. That's really helpful, thank you. I, so I guess my suggestion is gonna be like, I is that, based on Bob's advice, is that we earmark it, right? And then, um, whenever you tell us, Bob, whatever that timing is that you need for us to come up with the, what we need from Ms. Long to then allocate, to then disperse the funds, right? Because we can do that in the agreement, we can actually say, like, we need a business plan by September twentieth to see it before you get the funds.
So in other words, you're, you're suggesting that we do the grant proposal process like Bob was suggesting?
Yes. That we, yeah, so we've got the funds, as, as Councilmember Hill and Councilmember June said, right? And so, we've got the funds, we earmark them because we're being asked to make a decision tonight, but then we, um, identify whatever stipulations need to go in it, as Bob said, in some sort of grant agreement, um, where they may or may not get the funds, depending on whatever we decide are those restrictions.
Haven't heard from Bijou, or Don?
Just a question for clarification, the full-time employee and the part-time employee will be employees of Capel Historical Society?
That has not been determined, I, I don't want to make assumptions around.
So what I want to know is, is a city employee or another entity employee?
It is not included in the proposed budget on the employee count that is is presented to the council thus far as a city employee.
Okay, so that eliminated that, okay. So it gotta be a different entity.
I'm fine with the idea of earmarking the funds, but I don't, I don't feel like we're at a point where we can authorize them to be spent. I do think somebody used the phrase "business plan", like, if somebody came to us to open a business, they would need, we would, if we were gonna be equity investors, we would want a business plan. What, what are you gonna accomplish? How's this gonna work? What are the contingencies? What if the lake dries up? What are we gonna do? I mean, all, there would be a lot of thought that went into this, and I think that's what Ms. Leach was referring to, is there just has not, there have not been enough conversations yet exactly to, to come up with that succinct plan, and I, I believe it's really proven that we have that succinct plan before we spend the money, because it is a hundred thousand dollars, and sort of, not in, not forever, but it's hard to turn it off once it gets turned off if it goes sideways. And having a more succinct plan, I think, would help prevent that and help us launch that. I, you make a good point, that previous councils have been very thoughtful in, in their planning before they spent funds, and I think this is another situation. So I'm okay with earmarking, earmarking them, but I really, whether through a grant agreement or through additional authorization from the council after we see a business plan or something, that there needs to be coming back to, to have us authorize the money to be spent.
You know, I, I agree with you, Don, in, in one sense, that when someone would, would bring forth a bu, business plan, because they are in the business of making money, um, and this is a business that they're trying to get along with. You're asking a volunteer to go into a great deal of detail, I mean, she's obviously done research, I mean, she's, and she knows what grants are out there. Now, what, what level of detail are you expecting this volunteer who's trying to do something for the city to present to us?
Well, I guess.
I can answer that.
Well, let me say one thing, I mean, it is, it's still a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, it's not chunk change just to turn a hundred thousand dollars out there, so I, I, I hear what you're saying. I guess that's my concern is, but at the moment, even logistically, like, uh, like Parks hasn't, they haven't vetted, but, I don't think city staff even knows what to vet really at this point, right? I mean, there's, because there isn't really a succinct plan, so having, having more, a more succinct plan has gotta be, I, I guess, laid out, uh, it, it would be my thoughts.
For me, to answer your question directly, it's, educate us on what types of grants are available, what kind of funding are you gonna go after? Now, maybe you don't have the manpower to fill out all the applications and follow through and stuff, but at least give us a general idea of like, these are the funding sources that we're gonna go tackle, and this is how, I, I basically want, not that I don't believe her, but like, show me the proof that you can, that you are gonna come back and, and need this hundred thousand dollars next year. That's all I wanna see.
Yeah.
Is, and if you can come back and say, you know, we go get these five grants, we're, we're good to go, I think it's easy to, to, you know, give them that initial seed money so they can get that off the ground. That would be my, my ask, just to understand more.
Right.
Just tacking on that a little bit, and, and furthermore, like, let's say it takes longer to get the grants than we think, so what, what sort of are the contingency, I mean, are we okay going two or three years funding this? Because it might take longer to get the, the grants, that's very fair that it might take longer, so, what might we be signing up for, long, sort of long-term?
And, and just to add to that, I mean, we've required it from others before, like I said, biodiversity center, if, if that somehow fits. I don't know if that went through the park board at all, if that one did, okay. But we wanted to know exactly how they were gonna be sustaining going, but, like, sustainability going forward, or were they going to rely on any money from us going forward, so that we could earmark that, right? If, if it, if it needed to come out of hot funding, then we needed to, to put that aside, so. I guess that's why, that's why I would want more of a business plan, I understand the volunteer piece, I think that's really important. I also wanna be careful with just setting precedents, because we could have a lot of people coming forward and saying, hey, we have these great ideas, and, and it fits into your hot fund, can you give us a hundred thousand dollars, and, you know, we'll figure it out. And I'm not saying that of Ms. Long, I think she's done a lot of research, I think she's extremely good at what she's doing, but the conversations seem to have just started to the depth that we're looking for. I would like to know, the question Bijou just asked, who, who is going to employ this person, right? And you're gonna have to pay them going forward, I presume, so who's going to pay that salary, and how are we gonna make sure we can even cover that salary? Or is that somehow going to fall under us as an additional headcount? So, that's the round.
Don?
Is that where you were coming from?
Uh, furthermore, and this, I may be getting way ahead, but is there some, eventually, would there be some partnership with the Chamber? Is the Chamber, and is there a visitor's center? Do they, do they have ideas? Do they wanna play in a visitor's center or tourism center? Or would this just be the Historical Society forever? So that, that's sort of a longer range idea, but what, what potentially, what conversations have been had between the organizations that, and staff that might come out of that? So I, I mean, I would've thought the Chamber would, but wanna be involved with that, but, uh, maybe I'm wrong, maybe they don't.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'll just say, I, I know the Chamber, uh, you know, has, has plans and, and things like that, and I know that there's been talks between Historical Society and Chamber, kind of, who's gonna do what, and what lane everybody's gonna be in, but I don't think that that's, that's been vetted out entirely as well, so. I think you're, you're absolutely correct, that's a, that's a big part of the long-term plan. I think Chris had said something in the presentation about, you know, we, we would, you know, have some sort of information about things, but then we pass that over if an eventual, uh, convention, a visitors bureau, uh, was created. But understanding what does that, what does that look like, who's gonna be responsible for what, and to when, and what time that might look like. I think all of that stuff, I would love to see that included in a presentation as well.
Bijou?
Yeah, um, on the biodiversity center, if my understanding is correct, it was a public-private partnership. They raised so much donation from the public, then the city gave some portion to them.
That's right.
That was a public-private partnership.
We made them go figure out where they were gonna go get funding before they came and meet, and then we contributed.
Excellent. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
They actually had promised to spend, to build the entire thing, and then they got into it, and we're a little short, so we covered the difference.
Yeah.
But it was, it was, it was essentially the way you described it.
Right.
Yes.
So can I make a, I mean, I can make a suggestion, we could just designate fund balance in the hotel occupancy tax, the hundred and seven, so it's sitting there, and then we can work through this and come back and amend the budget.
I like that.
If it's something that you want to.
So, what I was gonna recommend is that, instead of doing the entire hundred and seven, let's give them their standard ten thousand as part of the, the grant, and then the remainder, ninety-seven, one ninety-seven, do the, uh, designate it and, and as part of a grant proposal. That would allow them to operate, you know, with some funding outside of the grant proposal, and do the majority of their, their work within the, the confines of whatever tough agreement we worked up with them.
Kevin?
Mayor, might I suggest that we maybe increase that slightly to like, maybe fifteen or twenty, in case they need a little bit of runway to, uh, you know, to get more information, or make a proposal, or, or enlist a little bit of help? I, I don't know if that's helpful or not, but I do want them to know that, that we are taking them seriously, and we want, but we just want more information, and we want another plan.
I.
No, but I
Go ahead.
I, I like your idea, give them the usual ten thousand dollars for what they usually ask for, and then the rest is for the, going after the funding, right? So, that would more, make more sense to me.
I do like the, yeah. What you said, the ten, and then what you said, and how you're marking it.
Yeah.
True.
Yeah, and, I think, you know, like we said, I think she did extensive research, so asking her for the business plan as to where the fund is gonna come from, what grants are available, I don't think it's gonna be too much of asking her, um, I think, because she presented it while I was to the funding being available, so.
So, yeah, like Bob said, you know, we are in the middle of July, they have two and a half months. We can only release on October first, right? Even if we approve ten thousand, so they have two and a half months to prepare the document, whatever, or details.
And the one oh seven is still available.
So do, are y'all okay with the ten thousand as part of the normal? And then ninety-seven, one ninety-seven is part of the earmarked, as, as, to fund the grant, uh, for whatever type of grant proposal that we've determined to come up with, with them?
I'm okay with that.
I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Good choice.
Let's, let's move on, uh, let's call Cliff back in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Kim, because I was trying to figure out if there was a waiting for us to, like, the money's still there, right, and?
Similar to what we do in the general plan, where we're designating things for specific projects, that we don't know when you're gonna release the money?
Yes.
So then we would come back, we would come before you, or they would come before you, you would authorize that, and then we would bring forth that budget amendment.
So we just created another silo for you.
Well, and, so then, and then I guess on top of that too, then we're not tied to the October first date either.
No, it's not.
Perfect. I want that.
Whenever they're ready.
Yes. I don't know, we say right now, our, what we could spend is almost five thousand. Out of that, we're almost spending.
And if she submitted the information earlier.
No, because only the highlighted, the drylands.
She could know that on October first.
And the four hundred thousand is only in store.
Absolutely.
There's different programs.
Because it's favoritism, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome back, sir.
Thank you.
So, so let's, uh, we've got a, we've got about twenty minutes till the council meeting starts. Um, the Assistance League of Capel asked for twenty-five hundred. Anybody have a problem with that?
Can I just give a chum this up?
What? Okay, um, the ballet. Yes, that is new, that's never been asked for before. Uh, Ballet Ensemble did not ask for anything. The Children's Advocacy Center asked for four thousand six hundred seventy-five. Anybody have a problem with that number? All right. Christian Community Action, fifteen thousand. Uh, the Capel Arts Council, this is H O T, qualified, twenty-seven thousand. The Chamber of Commerce, forty-five-five. Capel Community Corral, nine thousand.
Can I, can I ask a good question on the, on the Chamber?
Yes.
Sorry, and I, I'm fine with the forty-five-five, but, um, when they went from thirty-five-five to forty-five-five, wasn't it like a, a one-time ten? It wasn't?
No, that was.
Was that for several years ago? There was a one-time fee where they needed funding when they were moving into their new building?
It was like twenty-five thousand at the time.
Okay.
That was part of the capital campaign.
Okay, yeah, I figured you would know, okay.
This was what, back in, we realized that we were getting charged for a lot of their. This was what back in, we realized that we were getting charged for a lot of their events.
Yes, yes.
So this was to cover, they basically gave us X number of tickets for their events and.
Gotcha. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
The top billing on the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It was when Kevin was the chair and he was spending extra money.
Whoa, easy there.
Activity, activity.
Oh, by the way, the corral was a one thousand dollar increase. Okay, Capella Community Orchestra, eighteen thousand. That's a thirty-two hundred dollar increase.
That's from hot funding.
And that is hot funded.
I actually, I had a little question about the use of that addition of their two hundred dollars, which was for one-time performance of, I think it was an orchestra.
It's like the Sound of Capella piece that they were going to.
Wait, for the orchestra one?
Yeah, orchestra, I, I.
So they've, they've committed to doing basically a symphony. Based on the Sounds of Capella. And it was actually written up in the newspaper this past weekend that they're doing it, even though we haven't agreed to fund it.
Funded?
Yes. That was a little interesting. Bijou?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, you know, items listed, we have qualifies for hot funding.
Yes.
They are fully funded, right? It's not fifty percent, twenty-five percent. They are fully, we can take the money out of court and fund it fully, correct?
Correct. For, for the arts, you have a hundred and ninety-four thousand available. And they ask here is, I believe, fifty-four thousand for the arts between the three, the twenty-seven and nineteen.
Oh. Yeah.
Enough to cover this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I remember the days when we were talking about hot funding years ago, we never.
We didn't have a hot fund.
And we never believed it was going to happen.
I remember we were talking about Doubletree coming. That would have been our first hotel. And they brought us cookies.
John, you were, you were voicing some concerns.
Yeah, cause I think that. Previous years, they were talking, talking about how, or even I think they mentioned that they were starting to charge for their performances and we thought that they would be starting, they would start to make up some and actually come back asking for less, but instead they're asking for more, even though they start charging for their performances. And this was a one-time thing for the, is that symphony?
Well, the, the, the symphony or the composition is a one-time thing, yes, even though they're not showing it that way. Kevin?
I was just going to say that I think that if I was there, I, I'll just say it's that presentation needed a little bit, little bit more, I, I think. Um, but, um, I mean, I understood the purpose of the increase as they want to do this, you know, this composition or whatever. I, I'm, I'm completely fine with that. Uh, but with the understanding that that, that piece is a one-time ask on that. And I have a feeling that their presentation is going to be a little bit more polished next year.
I think it will be.
Are we going to make this a one-time thirty-two hundred dollar increase now?
So it's a, it's.
Yeah, they're, they're asking for thirty, what the?
Thirty-two hundred.
Yeah, thirty-two hundred.
Or this. But it was, they specifically said that was going to be used for that symphony, right?
They did, they did say that.
Can we, can we make note of that, that they'd be the one-time ask?
Then I'm fine with it.
Cause I, can we do that?
It's done.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's done. Vicki's done it.
Okay. Yay, thank you. Sorry, I was looking at Kim.
Okay, next on the list is Metrocrest, request of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. That is a forty-five thousand dollar.
One time. Oh, no.
So I don't think it's one time.
No.
Okay, and I'm, I'm all for giving Metro, I thought, I guess I thought I understood that it was.
So Tracy explained that they have seen a significant increase in services demand in the area.
Right, okay.
And he said, this is representative of our share of that service increase.
Gotcha. Okay, so this is not a one-time, okay.
Kevin?
I'm, I'm good with it. I mean, I, I, his presentation was very direct and to the point and said, this is the need, this is what we're asking for. Uh, I think we, overall, we contribute a lot less than the other cities do. So, um, this is a direct service to our citizens, so I'm a.
And I'm, and I'm totally fine with that. I was just curious if there was any other funding that we could utilize based on COVID? But I think we, I think we exhausted that potentially, right?
They are currently on your list for art funds already.
Okay.
So you could fund it this year with art funds?
They are on the list for how much?
It's three seventy-five, I believe, over three years.
Yeah.
I was just curious if there was a way for us to utilize that.
There is, but this wasn't, his request was really not a one-time, it wasn't a one-time ask.
I understand.
Yes, you, we could, but it's, it would come back up next year.
Okay, gotcha. I'm fine with it.
Okay, let's move on then. Thank you very much. Uh, Family Place did not present, zero. Woven Community Clinic, ten thousand. That was a thirty-five hundred.
Excuse me, they have adjusted their request to six thousand five hundred to what they asked for last year.
Excuse, sorry about that.
Oh.
Okay.
Wovenness?
Wovenness, they, they have reduced.
Well, there's the money to go to the orchestra, I guess.
Not exactly.
And then the YMCA, a thirty thousand dollar ask.
Fine with that.
Wait, is this a one-time again with ten thousand?
Well, it was, it was.
That sounds work. I mean.
No, that was last.
Oh, that's.
It was a, he's basically asking for thirty thousand, twenty thousand for their general fund and ten thousand for their after-school support.
I, I would note it as we did last year.
Which is a one-time, right?
As a twenty with a ten thousand one time, and then let's reevaluate next year.
So again, this, the ten thousand is actually available for art funding.
Well, there you go. I'm sorry.
Do you want to, do you want to designate the ten thousand as set aside for art funding?
I do. I don't want.
We got ten grand.
Stop looking at staff. You guys tell us.
We got ten grand later on in that thing?
Well, it's going to come out of some of the, the, it's going to come out of one of the other items that we've discussed that have not been implemented yet.
That's a small adjustment we can make in.
Cool.
Okay, so twenty K.
One time.
Ten K.
Yeah.
All right, everybody give it that.
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, um. Anything else on budget? Did you have a, you have a?
You have your mayor council's budget to cover.
I'm sorry?
Mayor council's budget to cover.
Yes.
Can we do that in ten minutes?
We can do that in ten minutes. I can talk fast if you could.
We, we can't, we can't listen fast. Okay, go ahead.
Go for it.
Does everybody have a packet? Okay, good evening, mayor and council. Does everybody have a packet? Would you, that's it. Yes. I have extras if you need one. All right, um, so I'll be going over the mayor and council budget tonight for the fiscal year twenty-three proposed budget. If you flip to page three in your handout, you will see the overview of the expenditure totals for prior year, current year, and for our proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-three. Um, we are projecting a decrease in total expenditures from current year, fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-three by approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, so this is just an overview. Now we'll switch to page four, which is behind it, and we'll go over the line item details. So supplies, a total thirteen thousand fifty dollars, uh, which is an increase from current year. Office supplies and computer supplies have stayed flat. Um, due to inflation, meal, uh, meals and refreshments for council meetings, um, have gone up slightly. Um, and because of the council election next year, um, uniforms have increased. Uh, so that's the increase in the supplies. Um, services total five hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and ten dollars, which is a decrease from current year.
Wait, where are you? I thought you said page three.
Page four, I'm sorry.
Four, page four.
But you were on uniforms and clothing. The next one was telephone.
Oh, yes, I'm grouping, I was grouping the supplies together and now I'm going to group the amount of the services together and then go line for line what they are. I was giving an overall total of the supplies. So, um, we have the supplies total as thirteen thousand dollars. Um, the increase there was due to the refreshments, um, and the uniforms. And the next one is telephone, which is part of our, um, services total. Um, everything below that is our service total. And that total for that, um, is five hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and ten dollars. So all of those together, which would be a decrease in the services.
So when you say all of those, what is that, what is all?
Yes, so, um, the six, four, thirteen, so the telephone.
Okay.
Training, legislative travel, dues and membership, publication and subscriptions, building rental, printing services, advertising, contingency, special projects and other services.
Oh, so everything else.
The total, yes, the total of that is our services, um, and that's the five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, so if we switch to the training expenses and publications, those have stayed flat from the fiscal year twenty-two current year and going on to the proposed fiscal year twenty-three. Um, there is an, uh, increase in our legislative travel, um, for the sales tax and legislative special sessions. The dues and memberships are up because of an increase in the price for the North Central Texas Council of Governments and National League of Cities. Um, if we look at publications that stayed flat, um, building rentals, um, has gone up because we were budgeting this in special projects. Um, and now we have seen over the years that we are using more and more of the money for the specific reason, building rental. So we made an account for it, so we can account correctly for it. Um, printing services, advertisement, those have stayed the same. The special projects, that's what we just went over, which is our service organizations. In this budget here, that is our current fiscal year twenty-two numbers. Um, the numbers that you just approved, we will update those and you'll see that update on the July twenty-eighth budget workshop.
That's a good question. You have twenty-one hundred for team leadership and that was for twenty-twenty-two. What did we do for team leadership?
Um, because we don't, it's not ongoing right now. I can, I can look for that and, and tell you exactly what it was for.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Where's our cost for the Fourth of July parade?
Um, that is.
Christmas parade.
Uh, we have a Christmas parade. I believe that might be designated in another fund. I can find that fund for you.
Okay, I, I just was, that's all the Christmas and we tried to look up the Fourth of July.
Okay. I can find that for you and get that to you.
I guess, um, so for the team leadership, if we could, if I could do it for it, because we're using prior year numbers. And then if it wasn't used, if we didn't do it, it just stays there and flows back into the.
Okay, I was just curious. Yeah, that was ongoing. Thank you.
Um, so for other services, we do see a decrease. Um, this is because we are no longer including the solutions for local government, uh, which was a consultant for the city.
That was Fred Hill.
Yeah.
What issue? Yeah, so page four.
Mm-hmm.
The building rentals. The three items, so the, can you explain a little more about what, what we are paying for this?
Sure. Um, so when we started the, um, integration between the transition of the old, uh, community theater to the art center, um, through those talks, there was a conversation about where they were going to house their items, um, and they were already housing them at the storage unit. Um, and that was a cost that they, um, that we took on for them, um, for moving them. Um, and so we've just been, um, using that in our special, we've been paying for it through our special projects in the council. Uh, and since we've been doing that for several years since twenty-eighteen, we decided to make that an actual account so we can account for it.
So it's coming out of mayor's and council budget to pay for something in the rental that we are paying?
Yes, for the Capella Community Theater. And we took that on in twenty-eighteen.
Why doesn't that come out of the hot tags? Cause it's rental.
That's a discussion that you can have. We can go over that a little bit more.
We can move that.
Yeah, we definitely can.
Yeah. Why do we come in on a mayor's budget?
It's seen, it's seen as, it's seen as this is, um, rental for the Capella Theater. And because it's a service organization that's servicing the, the arts, that's why it's coming out of mayor council. So, and it's been coming out of there since twenty-eighteen, since the discussions that took place around the art center. It was just, we decided that it needed to be more transparent, so we are showing it as building rental rather than showing down as a special project. We wanted to make sure that you know what's in the budget.
Sorry, what, what was that?
Hang on, here, Tom had his hand up first.
A question, so the building rental, you said those are the storage buildings, that's the twelve thousand dollars?
Correct.
What is the community theater storage for seventy-nine hundred in the special projects? Is that a separate?
So, um, let me see. Yeah, so that will be, um, that will be taken out of there.
Okay, so that's double. So seventy-nine hundred won't be there?
Correct, correct.
Because when we did the special projects, we just put everything in there that was in there from last year, waiting for you to make your decisions this evening.
Correct.
And then it'll be adjusted to what you.
John?
No, I was going to say, can you fill me in on the agreement as to why the council is, or they're paying for the storage for the community theater? Cause I don't know about it.
That was just her. Go ahead.
So, um, when the council had discussions regarding the art center, when we were building the art center and they were moving them from the old art center, there was discussions and we were, um, told to start, there was a decision. That's all I can tell you. Um, I don't recall this specifics back to twenty-eighteen, that the city would pay for the storage for the theater.
At that time, we knew that there was not going to be storage available at the new art center. And so that was one of the things that we, we talked about as, what does that transition look like? And so that's how this has become reality in the budget.
So there was no timeline, there was just a perpetuity that we were going to pay for the storage for their, I guess. Equipment?
Stuff.
Your stuff. Huh.
So this is up for discussion. Yeah, it's up to your discretion.
It's your, it's your, you need to put my direction, correct.
Well, I, I. There's no funding that one out, that we just didn't know about.
So the, so the, help my memory, guys. The discussion back during the building of the art center was, do we want to put a, a storage facility in the art center? And the cost was going to be significantly higher than what this turns out to be. That's what I remember.
But what was the reason behind funding this endlessly?
Because it was the option to either fund it at the art center, which we would have paid for anyway, or to pay for it this way, which was significantly less.
Again, we can move it to the hotel occupancy tax, to the art center line item, or the arts, not center, but the arts, um, portion, if this is something that you would like to continue.
Can't, I'm building some storage on the new service center.
That's what we're talking about. I mean, we're, we're adding on to doing the new service center project, it's just right across the way. We own it, we'll pay twelve thousand a year.
I'm just trying to.
I mean, after five years or ten years, we pay for it.
Yeah, I think there's a, some opportunity with some future discussions that we're going to be having on the service center.
Discuss this one.
And other things. But you've got to remember, the, the construction cost of the art center to house this stuff was, I can't remember, was high.
It was really high.
Yeah, at one, at one time.
Cliff.
At one time, John, uh, prior to your time on the council, when we were, when we were building, we were designing the center, there was a big area in the back where they were going to build sets behind the black box. And so we decided that could be better used or we could eliminate. And so, we decided that could be better used, or we could eliminate that stuff, that, that square footage in there, use it for other purposes. And so, at that time, the decision was made that we would use the old firehouse to store stuff for them. Which happened.
There's a number of organizations, and I'm just wondering why we decided to go out and fund this storage fee endlessly? And this, and twelve thousand dollars? I mean, what kind of a coin do they have that's costing this much?
We're funding it from ourselves, so.
Or is...
And if the cost of storage continues to go up, they're continuing to raise the rate, isn't that...
So, John?
Well, I'm just curious, is this just an operating expense of the art center? I mean, I guess it's specifically for the community theater, but it's, it's sort of just a, we didn't build something, so we just rent space. Is it just an operating expense of the arts?
Yes.
The ongoing art center, is it?
I would not consider that an operating expense for the art center.
Because it's specifically for the theater, for the community theater?
Yeah, there were, there was a company within the art center, but that is not an operating cost of the art center.
Right, that's a good point.
And so, could the, could the, that company come to us with a special request?
For a grant?
Yeah, for a grant, and say...
And I can pay for it.
Uh, you know, uh, we'd like to request twelve thousand dollars, and I'm, I'm just, it could? That's the avenue to, I mean, or do we have to be that elaborate to follow them under hot funds if we want to?
You can direct me to budgeting the hot funds, or you can direct me to, um, request, have them request it from you.
And could it not be a regular service organization request on an annual basis, if that would be something to fund?
We could, we could...
Because they don't ask for it.
We could let them know that, you know, future funding is going to be contingent upon them requesting it through the grant request, like every other service organization.
Sorry, I just missed, where, where are we storing this?
We stored it at the old firehouse.
The one in, in Old Town on?
Moore's, Moore Room.
Oh, the one on Moore, the old theater?
It used to be.
It used to be. Yeah, it's at, um, it's at a different vendor now.
Is that a story, yeah?
A storage unit, yeah.
Storage units.
Oh, is it? I thought they still...
Oh, that's what I was wondering, I, I thought we still had the one at Moore. But then there was also something that we had, like, when we talked about old firehouse, I'm thinking like an Old Town on that right-hand side of the main.
I'm talking to, on Lot Austin.
Okay.
So, they're, they're actually renting facilities.
Yeah, there's specific units listed on here, so.
Yes, we did a lot of reconciliation of storage units and what is in them and, because we get rid of some. And we looked, they have a lot of props and things that really need some proper storage. And, um, I don't think that the old theater.
Is appropriate?
Correct.
Got it.
Oh, good to know.
Is it already, is it HVAC controlled, is that, like, is it inside?
No, it's not, um...
But it's rack controls.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to figure out the car.
Anyway, all that to say, we probably should talk about that one going forward. But I think, at this point, we gotta, it's on our budget, and we gotta...
Well, but you're on hearing that there's consensus to, for this upcoming year to move it to the, the hot fund, and then we can continue the conversation around what will the years after that look like?
Yeah, I, I like that.
Yes, yes.
It's twelve thousand dollars.
And we will contact the, the Capel Community Theater and give them notice that, you know, we're going to, it's paid for this, next fiscal year, but they will need to do a grant to see if they'll pay for it in the future. Is that acceptable?
Are we paying directly to the storage company?
Yes, yes, yes. We are not, we are paying directly. So, is that acceptable? When we decide, then we'll give them notice.
Okay. Thank you, ladies. We are going to recess from work session. The time is seven-thirty-two. We will reconvene into the regular session of the city council in five minutes.
I'm going to go home and call in for a moment.
No.
Howdy, everybody, good evening. Uh, the time is seven-forty PM. We're reconvening our, into the Capel City Council regular session. We do have a, a citizen's appearance tonight and, and public hearings. Uh, please sign in, the appropriate register outside the council chambers, enlist your address. Item number four is our invocation. Dr. David Davity, Davuti, I'm sorry, with the Allies and Community Interfaith Group is here to give our invocation. And then please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Testing. On behalf of the Capel Interfaith Committee, my name is Fabioz Daviti. We appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. I'm a member of the Baha'i faith. May God bring peace to each family in Capel, especially newly-elected members of this body. May God provide spiritual food for the state of Texas. May he sustain the soul of our nation, and may he change the whole earth into a safe, secure, and peaceful planet. O divine providence, this assemblage is composed of thy friends who are attracted to thee and are set ablaze by the fire of thy love. Turn these souls into heavenly angels, resuscitate them through the breath of the Holy Spirit, cause them to become permaulgators of the oneness of mankind and the cause of love and concord in the world of humanity, so that the perilous darkness of prejudice may vanish through the light of the Son of Truth. This dreary world may become illumined. This material realm may absorb the rays of the world of spirit, and the melody of praise may rise to the kingdom of sanctity. Verily, thou art the omnipotent and the almighty. It's a prayer from Abdalbaha.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Item number six is a citizen's appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their residence address. Each speaker must state his or her name and their address. Presentations made by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual speaker's time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, the mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberation from the city council due to the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Once our timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and make a request to the mayor and the city council to extend the speaker's time if they so desire. Uh, tonight signed up, we have Ms. Barbara Bailey, uh, Ms. Bailey? Welcome, and state your name for the record, please.
Barbara Bailey, two-thirty-two Plantation Drive. Do I just start talking? Okay, I wrote it down, so I could get under your two minutes. Um, the, I live on Plantation Drive, and the Plantation Drive remodel has resulted in the city installing some hazardous curbs at every corner of Plantation. There's about eighteen or twenty of them. These were not on the original plans, approved by the city council, and were reconfigured later. As, some are as tall as eight inches on each corner, is, and each corner is different. The installations are a trip hazard and will cause injury to adults and children alike. I could not get good information from the city about this, so I contacted the governor's office, the Governor's Commission on Disabilities, Dex, Tech dot, and companies that make or install ADA sidewalk products. And after emailing them pictures of these sidewalk curbs, I got the following responses. Either they said it was not a good design, the road was installed too low, there was an engineering mistake, or the city, uh, and, or the city created an, with someone, one of them referred to as an unnecessary obstacle course. And although these dangerous curbs are ADA compliant, they need to be removed and replaced with other ADA compliant curbs, either the diagonal flare corners we're all familiar with, or the directional flare corners that have no obstructions. Residents were not informed about any of these changes, about the sidewalk curb changes from the council-approved plans. And how the city is paying for the last minute additional work the city required of the sidewalk subcontractor after the subcontractor bid on the original sidewalk plans, I don't know. As the residents, as residents and taxpayers, I feel totally blindsided by the fiscal issues. This is created by additional costs and the dangerous conditions outside our front door. Lastly, if these curbs sit on private property within the city right of way, is the city council assuming liability for the trip hazard installations? Or are they going to, or is the homeowner responsible for the liability? And I hope you care about our safety and well-being right outside our front doors, and these, no one likes them. They are, everybody thinks they're dangerous. And we started a petition, but we're not done yet. So, that's it. I hope you care.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, item number seven is a proclamation, and if you will give me a moment. Item number seven is proclamation proclaiming the month of July as Park and Recreation Month. Jessica, well, you're bringing your group down, come on down. I don't feel comfortable turning my back to everybody, so I'm going to stand over here. Counsel, for your consideration. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the country, including Capel, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality alive in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas our parks and national recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children, adults, to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Park and Recreation Month, now therefore I West Mays Mayor, the city of Capel, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Capel, and I encourage all citizens to celebrate by getting active outdoors, connecting with nature, visiting one of Capel's many parks and recreation facilities, and creating memories with friends and family. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused a seal of Capel to be affixed as twelfth day of July, twenty-twenty-two. Counsel. Counsel member Carol.
Thank you, mayor. I move to approve item number seven, the proclamation declaring the month of July as Park and Recreation Month.
Uh, second by council member Nevels, all in favor?
Long, Keno, Smith, Carol, Nevels, Jen, Matthew, Hill in favor, none opposed, so motion carries.
Well, thank you very much. I've got a, something a little special. I received a note in the, in the mail, and it's from a citizen. And you never know what you're going to get. Like Forrest Gump said, it's like a box of chocolates. But I wanted to read this to the, to the, to the city, and it's addressed to me, but it's not really to me, it's to you guys, so here you go. Uh, we want to think, we want you to know how much we enjoyed the Capel Independence Day Celebration Parade on July second. We were joined by our son and his fiancee and two other couples who had not been to a prior Capel celebration. All said, the evening was beyond their expectations. Please express our appreciation to the employees and volunteers who planned and executed the event. Note that we were especially impressed by the men who kept up with the trash. Good job, guys. Good luck in your work for the citizens of Capel. May the Lord guide you in all you do. Sincerely, this was signed by Beth Wilcox, so, that was very special, so, thank you. Counsel, you have anything to comment about? Council member Nevels.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, how lucky we are in this community to have such an amazing Parks and Rec Department. We specifically bought our house because it was next to Andy Brown East, so the, the value that the park system brings is, is incredible. I was working out at the core today, uh, met, saw some of our staff members there as well, so it's just a, I think our parks are such an integral part of our daily lives. So, I want to thank you guys so much for all, that all of you guys do. You do so much to bring such amazing value, and I think everyone in our community acknowledges the amazing work you do. And, uh, we appreciate the hard work, just in the sense that we are an amazing, award-winning park system. So, thank you guys so much for all you do, we appreciate you.
Council member Carol.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I was talking to somebody over in the city of Dallas not too long ago, and we were just, we were just chatting, and he mentioned, he'd not, was not really familiar with Capel, but he said, "I was over there the other day, and I noticed I would drive, and there would be a park, and then I'd drive a few more blocks, and there'd be another park, and then I'd drive a few more blocks, and there'd be another park." He said, "You ought to be known as the city of parks." I think that is a better testimony than any of us probably sitting up here saying how great it is. For someone who doesn't know Capel, but their one introduction to Capel, it's, this is a land of parks. Uh, and I think that is a great testimony for the, the work that y'all have, have done. So, thank you very much for that.
So, thank you very much. I guess I do question the month that the House of Representatives chose to claim as Parks and Recreation Month, but, um, July is here, and we're in the middle of it. Jessica, do you have, I'm sorry, council member John?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I do want to say that the, um, I do appreciate everything that you guys have done, and I was at the celebration of Capel, and I've heard a lot of people commenting about what, how great it was, quite different from previous years, and we actually, I think we had more turnout this year than before. And they are looking, they were telling me they were looking forward to, you know, next year, to see what you guys are able to bring. And with that being said also, I do want to acknowledge the library as well. Dennis, you've done a real great, great job, and, um, proud to say that the program, that especially the immediate neighbor, neighbor program, is a strong program that a lot of people, a lot of cities doesn't know about, but when they hear about it, that they do appreciate the innovation and new ideas that you guys bring forth to the city. So, thank you again.
Council member Long.
Good peripheral vision, it's great.
I had Vicki pointing at you.
Oh. Yes, I, it's, you know, it's amazing. I did not realize what the, what, how good the Parks Department really was until I moved to Old Town. And, uh, you know, after the, uh, after a couple of events out there, I go out the next morning, because my office is, you know, faces the park, you couldn't find a piece of paper or anything in there. So, I said, you know, is this, you know, are, are citizens that clean? And actually, it was the Parks Department that did it. But here's what I also want to say. We could bring any one of the departments of this city up here, and, just like this, and you're going to find the same quality of work, uh, that that department does. So, the Parks Department, the finance, uh, so it's really a, a pleasure to be a, a part of the organization.
Thank you, mayor. Jessica, do you have something to say?
Just a few things, and I'm going to turn it over to Tiffany Anderson, our community engagement manager, so she can talk about a few fun activities that we have going on in recognition of Park and Recreation Month, but I just wanted to take a moment to thank mayor and council for your ongoing support, um, of our department and all of our initiatives, helping us win that national gold medal, uh, and really bring the feather in the cap to, to this community. So, thank you for your support, and thank you to this team up here, this is just a fraction of our department, but we have lots of folks represented here, the library, special events, the core, uh, marketing, senior center, art center. So, just wanted to thank... So, just wanted to thank all of these folks up here for doing all of the hard work every single day. They make us look great. So, I'm going to pass it over to Tiffany.
All right, well, I'm just going to start by saying thank you to the community and to Council for all of your support in helping us kick off Parks and Recreation Month with our amazing Celebrate Capel Independence Day events, the fireworks and the parade. It's a great turnout and just a really great event. So, thank you for your support for that. We do have a few other things we are doing this month to celebrate Parks and Recreation Month. This week, on Thursday, we're actually kicking off our Andy Brown Eats Pop-Up Food Truck Event Series. We're going to have Micosina food truck out at Andy Brown East, so you can pick up dinner from 5:30 to 7:30. We also have, we're celebrating National Ice Cream Day on Sunday, July 17th, at the core with free ice cream at the outdoor pool. We're doing popsicles at the playground at Kid Country on Thursday, July 21st, and then another, our second Andy Brown Eats Pop-Up Food Truck with Dicky's Food Truck on the 28th. So, just encourage y'all to visit our facilities all month long, say hi to the staff, say thanks to the staff, and then look online on our website and on social media for updates and other fun things to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Consent Agenda is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or passed council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available and have been rolling through the screen. Counsel, is there any item that you would like to see pulled or have additional questions on? Councilmember Matthew. Mayor Protil Matthews, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull the item B, please.
B, okay. That's Consider Approval of an Ordinance, the Capel Amending Ordinance 2021 1563, the Budget for Fiscal Year, October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022. Ms. Tien, would you like to address, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
So, this item is routine in nature. It is an amendment that we bring forth every year to amend for actions that Council has taken that were not included in the original budget, as well as actions, as well as incumbents' carryovers. An incumbent's carryover is a PO that is still open at the end of the fiscal year, which is September 30 of 2021. Because those goods and services have been ordered, and the city is committed to receiving those, and those would have been approved in your prior fiscal year budget, or they would have been a council action item that would have been approved, we are just basically bringing forth the paperwork so that the actions Council has taken will now match the budget. And so, that's the purpose of this amendment. Along with, we are amending some revenues, for example, general fund, CRDC, Crime Control Prevention District, and IMF sales tax revenues are being amended. In total, sales taxes being amended, about $34.2 million. And then, if you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer specific questions.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. On page three, the sales tax holding fund, $21 million?
Yes.
So, that's what we have sitting on the bucket unused at this point due to 3.33 rule, right?
So, that is the amount that we are estimating could potentially be clawed back if the rule goes into effect and the litigation goes not in our favor. So, we don't know, but we want to set it aside so that it's not, you know, we're not spending it and that we are, have it available should it be clawed back.
Okay, thank you. On page two, at the bottom of the page, CRDC Special Revenue Fund, 3.3 million. So, can you explain that a little bit, please?
So, the 3.3 million is really the result of higher-than-expected sales tax. So, as I mentioned, we're amending total sales tax revenue by the 34.2. So, this 3.3 is included in that. That's just CRDC's portion that we don't think is acceptable to the clawback.
Okay, that 3.3 included in the 34 million?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have Consent Agenda Items A, C, and D. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Hill.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A, C, and D.
Second by Councilmember Carroll. All in favor?
Long, Keno, Smith, Carroll, Neves, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, so motion carries.
All right. Thank you now to the item that was pulled, Consent Agenda Item 8B. Do I have a motion on it? Councilmember Hill.
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 8B.
Second by Councilmember Long. All in favor?
Long, Keno, Smith, Carroll, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, so motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number nine, Mr. Steeler, will you please read that into the record for me?
Mayor, Council, good evening. Tonight's presentation is a public hearing to consider approval of amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Article 29, Sign Regulations, Section 1229-1, Definitions, to amend 1229-4, Provisions for Business Zoning Districts, and to add 1229-7, Digital Signs, to define and allow for pylon signage adjacent to State Highway 121 and Interstate Highway 635, and to allow for public and private schools to use changeable letters on their monument signs, and to change gasoline to fuel, and to add 1229-7, Digital Signs, to allow for the relocation and digital conversion of two off-premise sign structures, and provide for regulations and definitions.
Okay.
We've been working with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Matt, before you get started, this is a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
And I'm opening the public hearing, and persons wishing to speak during the public hearing at a point later during the presentation must have registered and signed their residence address. We will call them to speak in order that they have registered. Their hearings are limited to five minutes per speaker, and we will start with the presentation by Matt, and then the applicant, and then the speakers. So, continue on.
Okay, thank you. So, staff's been working with the Planning and Zoning Commission since December 2021 in relation to the city-initiated zoning ordinance amendments for, that relate to signage. At the June 14, 2022 council work session, staff presented an overview of the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended changes, and received directions related from council to bring forward the sign ordinance amendments and additions for consideration. There are three components to the changes. The monument sign component, which includes a minor verbiage change, and a pylon sign addition, and then a digital billboard amendment. So, we'll start with, the first of the proposed revisions is the monument sign revision. It's to add public and private schools' uses allowed to have non-electronic changeable letters in addition to those uses already allowed, which include religious institutions and governmental organizations. There are several schools throughout Capel that currently have non-electronic changeable letter signs, and this amendment will formalize this use and allow the schools to continue to use signage to inform parents of certain events, such as the first day of school, when the PTA meetings are going to be, and when spring break the dates are for that. So, here's a picture of a couple of school signs found throughout the city, and when the commission was reviewing the sign section, the monument sign section of the ordinance, they recommended changing the word gasoline to fuel, and this would allow for other types of fuel to be displayed on the monument sign, such as diesel. It's a very minor change that was added to the proposed amendment. The next of the proposed revisions relates to pylon signs, and after two recent large developments along highways received council approval for pylon signs, staff discussed with the Planning and Zoning Commission the idea of changing the current sign ordinance to allow for these types of signs along highways by right. In an effort to work through the proposed recommendations, staff researched surrounding cities, and the Planning and Zoning Commission formed a subcommittee to talk about the design criteria. This resulted in the proposed change that was unanimously recommended by, for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. A pylon sign is defined as a freestanding sign supported by two vertical pole supports encased in brick, stone, or materials architecturally compatible with the main building or structure of the property. The size would be limited to 40-foot maximum height, 20-foot maximum width, and by allowing this by right, we can help promote the development of the remaining large parcel of land at 635 and Point West Boulevard, and will allow existing retail to attract highway business by increasing their visibility. The left two are examples of what we're trying to avoid, and the one on the right is really something we're trying to promote. And so, this would be solely allowed on properties that are zoned highway commercial and are part of a large conceptual plan development district. We put together a mock-up of the pylon sign, and this is in accordance with the new provisions that are in the proposed draft ordinance. We were sensitive to residential adjacency and would not allow for the signs to be closer than 200 feet from any residentially-zoned district, and then if the property is within 300 feet, or the sign's within 300 feet from a residential district, then we'd look at, we'd ask the applicant to provide a visibility study showing that it would not be visible from the adjacent residents, and we would not allow the sign to be illuminated between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. The third component of the request is, it relates to billboards. There's, two digital billboards are proposed along LBJ and the Dart right-of-way to replace the two existing static billboards at the same location. We have eight billboards that were removed along East Beltline Road. Here's a picture of before they were removed and after. This really cleaned up the view corridor along that road. Here's driving west on 635. You can see the existing sign to your right and the proposed new sign coming up to your right. The existing sign would go away, and the proposed sign would have a digital face, front face with a static-facing billboard on the backside. And then, driving east, there's the before picture, and that will be replaced with a digital billboard on the front, a static billboard on the rear. Here's an example of a typical billboard provided by Clear Channel. They would construct a very similar design to this, and at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they did recommend, or they did agree to wrap the support pole in masonry This is an overview of the potential amendments. On May 19, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously of the city-initiated zoning ordinance amendments, and staff briefed the council of these proposed changes in June, and is now recommending approval. Thank you for your time. That concludes my presentation. I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Steer? Ms. Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, the pylon signs, the locations are specific, correct? It's not, you're not, we're not going to be, people don't, they don't have to worry about this popping up everywhere around the city.
Correct, yes. So, this would be only along highway frontage within a highway commercial plan development district.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We actually have no applicants, so we can skip over that. We had no one signed up to speak on this item. So, counsel, any discussion on the ordinance, proposed ordinance? Oh, Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and approve Agenda Item 9.
Seconded by Councilmember Long. All in favor?
Long, Keno, Smith, Carroll, Neves, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, so motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 10 is a public hearing, therefore I do open the public hearing. Persons wishing to speak during this public hearing must have signed the register and listed their address. You will be called to speak in order you have registered. Public hearings are limited to five minutes per speaker. Ms. Peron Boswell, would you please read item number 10 into the record for me?
Yes, Mayor. Item number 10 is a public hearing. It's Consider Approval of a Zoning Change Request from PD 259R-SF7 SF9 to PD 259R2SF7SF9 to amend the PD conditions for the overall development and within Phase 2, reducing the number of residential lots from 20 to 9, shortening the cul-de-sac on Windmill Drive, and allowing Lot 5R Block D to have accessory dwelling unit and additional accessory structures on 54.855 acres of land located on the northeast quadrant of Sandy Lake Road and MacArthur Boulevard at the request of Terry Homes of HBBL Inc., being represented by Westwood So, this is a public hearing. Just to give you a little bit of brief background, this development did obtain approval of the current PD and Platts in 2020 and 2021, with two phases and a total of 74 residential lots and nine common area lots. They've come back to request some additional conditions and make modifications to Phase 2 of the development. Some of the conditions relate to the entire subdivision, while others relate specifically to proposed Lot 5R Block D located in Phase 2. So, this current request is similar to the existing PD, except the number of lots has been reduced from 74 to 63. It will still be a two-phase request. Phase 1 will include 54 residential lots, common areas, while Phase 2 now has nine residential lots with one common area. The following additional conditions are being requested as part of this overall amended PD. The first being, the previous PD stated that the minimum house size for Phase 1 SF9 would be 3,000 square feet. The new request for Phase 1 is to allow for a minimum 2,700-square-foot house, which is still significantly larger than the 1,600-square-foot required by the typical SF9 zoning district. As stated, this is only a minimum and would still allow for larger homes. The next PD amendment that they are asking for is an early-start building permit for up to 10 homes that may be issued after the infrastructure is approved and accepted by the city, but in advance of landscape acceptance by the city. Essentially, what they're asking for is to start construction for up to 10 homes prior to all of the landscaping being installed and accepted by the city. So, housing construction is a lengthy process, so this is to enable them to begin building houses, but no one will be allowed to actually occupy the house until everything has been accepted by the city. So, no certificates of occupancy would be allowed prior to the landscaping being approved. The third item, this subdivision must comply with American Bald Eagle and Gold Eagle Act of 1940, and the regulations promulgated thereunder. So, this is a federal requirement and serves to protect the habitat of the birds found nesting in a portion of Phase 2. So, there was a 330-foot radius around the active nest and tree until the fledgling eagles leave, or a permit is secured for certain activities via the permitting office of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. So, this really has nothing to do with us, but more with federal regulations. The last item that is for the overall development is to allow pool cabanas to have a restroom where they have a permitted swimming pool. So, you can't have a pool cabana. So you can't have a pool cabana without a pool. So currently, this is not allowed, so you can't have a restroom. However, this has been a common request, and staff is looking to amend the code of ordinances to allow this citywide. So these conditions, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of these So now Lot Five, Block D, the lot count in Phase Two, identified in the red outline, dropped from twenty residential lots down to nine residential lots, with the majority of lots increasing in size. The cul-de-sac identified in yellow on the screen was shortened to preserve the tree with the eagle's nest. So I'm just gonna, if you take a look at the screen, you'll see where the cul-de-sac was and how it's been pushed up or shortened. In addition to the PD conditions for the overall development, the following conditions are being requested specifically for Lot Five R, Block D, which is located on one point nine oh eight acres in Phase Two at the end of the cul-de-sac on Windmill Drive. Here, six lots are being combined to create Lot Five R, and that's identified in the blue on your screen. So Lot Five R backs up to common area. The developer is planning to reside here and is requesting to have up to six accessory structures, including a detached accessory dwelling unit for his parents to live in. The combination of the accessory units are not to exceed eighty-five hundred square feet. Typically, accessory structures must be less than the primary structure, hence the request before you. The primary structure here is proposed to be anywhere between four to eight thousand So what we're looking at here specifically is Lot Five R and their request for the different accessory structures. So the property outlined in red is Lot Five R. The main residence is identified as number one in blue on the top. The accessory structures would include, number two is one detached accessory dwelling unit with a secondary kitchen and bathroom not to exceed seventeen hundred square feet of living area, five hundred square feet of garage, and three hundred square feet of patio area. Number three is a shop slash barn not to exceed twenty-six hundred square feet. Number four is another barn not to exceed two thousand square feet. Number five is an aviary not to exceed six hundred square feet. Number six is a decorative windmill. And number seven is a pool cabana not to exceed eight hundred square feet. If the accessory dwelling unit structure identified as number two on this illustration were ever to be replatted into its own lot, it would need to meet the minimum set, minimum requirements for a lot, which would include dwelling unit size, setbacks, et cetera. It is the intent of the developer to design the house so that it can be expanded in the This is just an illustration of some examples of the buildings that he's proposing for Lot Five R. So the middle one is a concept main house, concept shop on the top left, a barn on the top right, and the accessory dwelling unit on the bottom right. So additional PD conditions for Lot Five R, Block D. Maximum accessory building height would be twenty-five feet to the peak. Typically, that's twelve foot for an accessory dwelling unit, or for, sorry, for an accessory building. Each accessory structure may be allowed to have a restroom and/or sink. And the next two, I want to preface that these are specific, the way this is read, it's specific to Lot Five R itself. Any other adjacent residential lot would have, it would have to comply with the distance requirements. So any horse, cattle, sheep, goat, or any other livestock may be allowed within a hundred feet of any residence or occupied building on Lot Five R, Block D. And any enclosure, pet, corral, or other restrictive area for livestock may be located within ten feet of any property used for residential purposes on Lot Five R, Block D. So again, it's really relating to number one and number two buildings, the main building and the accessory dwelling unit, that the, the barn or the animals, the livestock that he's proposing to have can be within a hundred feet of those two structures. The other residences outside of Lot Five R, so Lot Four and Six, it would meet that So we did send out notices, forty-six within two hundred feet as required by state law, another ninety-four within eight hundred feet as a courtesy. We did receive some phone calls and emails from residents along Hollywood Drive wanting more information. We did receive an email from Ms. Williams, who I believe is here to speak. I'll just kind of paraphrase or read what she emailed. Quote, "She is opposed to allowing accessory dwelling unit in other structures unless Olive Capel will be allowed to do this. The developer does not need these to sell his product. This is a personal request submitted as a business need. The accessory dwelling unit will end up being rented out on short-term sites like VRBO. If it's not part of the primary residence, it should not be allowed." End quote. She did call a second time after the meeting and was opposed to the livestock component. We did receive another email from Shannon Neary, who was not in favor of the idea. Quote, "It sounds like it would be one family and friends and would exclude the community. Capel is an area, we are there for each other, and this area is secluded to a few that the owner has picked. It almost sounds like a commune. This is how they start. I would be concerned about the concept of this." End quote. I did receive and spoke to a third person, Pat McKillip, who had questions regarding which property Mr. Holmes was looking to reside in and have the animals in. She wanted to know, you know, how many animals would he have? She wanted to know information about the eagle's nest and the trees, the tree mitigation fees that were paid, the odor of the animals, and if the animals would be allowed or would be trampling the areas to reach the creek. So I did speak with her to discuss which lot he was looking at, the amount of animals that he was looking to have, which was, and our discussion would be, he would have a maximum of three livestock animals. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of PD two fifty-nine R two SF seven, SF nine, Blackberry Farm, subject to the following additional conditions. One, to allow the reduction of the minimum house size in Phase One to be twenty-seven hundred square feet. Two, to allow early start building permits for up to ten homes. These may be issued after infrastructure acceptance by the city in advance of landscape acceptance by the city. However, no certificates of occupancy would be allowed prior to landscaping being accepted. Number three, the subdivision must comply with the American Eagle and Golden Eagle Act of nineteen forty and the regulations promulgated thereunder. Four, lots with permitted swimming pools may have a pool cabana with a restroom. Five, the following conditions are specific to Lot Five R, Block D. A, up to six accessory structures with a combined size not to exceed eighty-five hundred square feet. B, the accessory structures would include one detached accessory dwelling unit with a secondary kitchen and bathroom not to exceed seventeen hundred square feet of living area, five hundred square feet garage, three hundred square foot patio area. B two, one shop barn not to exceed twenty-six hundred square feet. Three, one barn not to exceed two thousand square feet. Four, one aviary not to exceed six hundred square feet. Five, a decorative windmill. Six, a pool cabana not to exceed eight hundred square feet. C, a maximum accessory building height, twenty-five feet to the peak. D, each accessory structure may be allowed to have a restroom and/or sink. E, any horse, cattle, sheep, or goat, or any other livestock may be allowed within a hundred feet of any residence or occupied building on Lot Five R, Block D. F, any enclosure, pen, corral, or other restrictive area for livestock may be located within ten feet of any property used for residential purposes on Lot Five R, Block D. G, they must meet all other livestock requirements. H, if the accessory dwelling unit were to be subdivided from the main lot, it must meet all residential requirements. That is the end of my presentation. I'm available to answer questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Peron Boswell? It is a public hearing.
Do we hear from the public first?
Yes, you can. Well, actually, we were gonna listen to the applicant. Are Westwood Professional Services or Mr. Holmes, do they have anything to say or care
Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you for your time. The, just a brief background on what, I've lived here twenty-eight years, and I love Capel. I've raised four children. Three of them live in Capel or in Cypress Waters, and then one lives in Grapevine. So all four are close. We have nine grandchildren, and the goal by two of my daughters was, hey, Dad, why don't you build that farm that you always wanted here on the property? And so it, at first, it even, it wasn't my consideration, but my girls in my family, my wife and my two girls, I thought about it, and I thought, that would be pretty cool. So, so then, it was, it was kind of stirring in the back of my mind, okay, we'll do it, and as it comes about, we'll, we'll make it happen. And then, in August, in October of last year, we discovered some people were poaching in our trees, and so, the eagles. And so, the, that changed everything. We then went through a decision, I learned about eagles and what, what our rights are with eagles and, and what our rights are not. And so, the net of it is, I found out that we could, we could take that nest and we could redesign our subdivision like what we did, or we could wait till they vacate the nest and we could remove the tree and the nest. Both are completely legal. And then, or we can get, like we're doing, a nest disturbance permit and have the right to, it's really something that protects us as an owner or a developer that says, okay, we're gonna keep the nest, we're going to work around it, and we're gonna protect these birds and not have a taking, is what it's called. A taking is a, is a bad thing. It's something you go to jail for. So, so that, that's what our goals are to do. We, you know, again, we've lived here for twenty-eight years. I've built like hundreds of homes in Capel and developed in, or built in developments or developed around twelve communities in, in Capel and for commercial buildings. And, and so I have invested into Capel. There's nothing I would do that would hurt Capel. And so, one of our goals as a company and maybe personally is to put art into everything we do. And so whether it's a commercial building or a house, I think we go the extra mile to make it look creative and different and hopefully gives it a sustaining value and look that is a benefit to the owners and to the city at large. Many people have walked through Red Hawk that do not live in Red Hawk and said, we love to walk through it because it's such a neat community, we love to just walk through it and look at the architectural details. And I think, yes, it accomplished the goal. We were first gonna start homes there that were four hundred and fifty thousand. I chose to do our first model home at the one-twelve Blackburn at seven hundred and sixty thousand and put slate roofs on it and make it stone and, and spend a lot more money on it with the hopes that other people would see the vision, invest into the city, and not think that just small, cool homes can't be in Vicero and parts of Dallas, but they can be here in Capel, too. And the market absorbed it slowly. It's taken over ten years to do it. We do not build track homes or, you know, or quick homes. They, they are long-term developments, and so, anything that I'm bringing to you today is with that in mind. It is not a quick thing. That's just not how custom homes and, and unique custom homes sell. They're slow, and, and so, part of our thing for BlackBerry was to, I bought the land in ninety-five, nineteen ninety-five, so for a long time, I was thirty-six years old then. And, and now, you can see, we, we've just kept it until it's time and then have now started to bring it in. We'll hope to be paving roads in next month, at the end of this month or the beginning of next month, and so it has come about. We hope to make that entry into Capel, meaning on, on the east side coming from Carrollton, that, in my opinion, struggles a little bit for identity and something unique and good-looking. We have a lot of power lines and other things to, to try to establish something really cool coming into Capel. And so, nothing's gonna change. We will take and exceed, and like we've done in all of our communities, exceed the landscape that is been, been approved, but we'll take that to a much higher level than even what's approved. The, so the few things that are, that we're asking for requests, we'll, we'll, so, after the eagles, then I met with Mary, Bob, our attorney, Matt Steer, and Cole, and said, okay, these things are the things we, we kind of want to change, and their thoughts was, well, if you're gonna do this thing, like, get everything into it, like, like, so you don't have to come back. So some of these things seem far-fetched, and if I'm out there looking, I'm thinking, what is this guy trying to do? It's just to do the thing so I don't have to come back. Will I do an aviary? I've always wanted to. We have found in our development damaged birds, or whatever, that just follow the tree, owls and stuff. We would, I would love to ultimately have a place, when I retire someday, to, to have birds of prey to be able to, you know, bring them back to health and then release them again. It's really hard to find a place around, when you find one like that. So that's the aviary thing. My parents are fortunate to have them near me, and also, they're, they're eighty-seven and eighty-five. My dad is a wonderful woodworker, has a shop now, they live in Ullis. I would, I want to honor them by having them close to me. They're, they need to be closer to me now. They're getting, they're, they're showing signs that that needs to happen. And, and having and honoring them in their own house, and I will design it in such a way that it can be added to. They don't, not, they need a large house. They have a twenty-seven hundred square foot home now, and, and that can be added to in a creative way that it will not be destroyed or whatever. I, I know how to do this, and, and it will look awesome. The, and then, the, the thing with the cows and stuff, and the livestock, right behind us to the north is the, the Dallas Gun Club. And if, if you don't know, if you've ever been back there, there is a herd of animals back there. They have at least twenty cattle, and I'm, I'm sure I'm way, way underselling that. It's a large piece of land, they have many cattle. We also have herds of deer out there. We have herds of, of course, there's bobcat and all that, you know, stuff, coyotes, but there's also a lot of boars. I personally have seen eight wild boar at one, in one herd at one time. And, and the neighbors around Hollywood have also seen them. I mean, many have seen them. And they're big black Russian boars. And so, there's a lot of crazy things going on out there. We hope to live there and be a part of it and make it really cool. I wish you could all come out sometime. The idea of making this exclusive, it's the exact opposite, in my opinion. I want to make it where people can walk in there and go, there's the eagles, that's cool. People can come ride their bikes there, kids can do it, and, and, and they can come and see the animals. There's not twenty-one homes like was previously approved, but there's just a few homes, and you can look through and see this big pond. I've got photos of it, but, you know, I didn't want to really do a presentation. I always could bring it back and be happy to. I always could bring it back and be happy to, but it's, it's a beautiful piece of land now. And so, people will be able to walk there and see it and not, and have maybe an old windmill like we have downtown, down in Old Capel would be the goal, and, and something that looks, uh, like with a Texas vernacular style to it that looks, that looks really, really cool. Um, I don't have a ranch, I don't have a vacation house, I don't have anything, so I've, I've kept all my money, and this is where it would go. And so, my goal would be that my, my one daughter, it's got six kids, would live beside us, and it's not a compound, it's open to everybody. It's, it's the exact opposite. There's not a, um, there's no ranch, and, and as far as the animals, my mother was raised on a farm in just north of, in Pennsylvania, just north of Gettysburg, and it was a very small dairy farm. It would be like that where you'd have maybe a small cows, you know, and then when they grow bigger, you, you sell them off or do something. You keep these small homies, as they would call them, and you keep that, and maybe, if you've ever seen a, if you've never seen a, a miniature llama, they're really cool. It's like a German shepherd with long legs, and you can grab the thing and they gotta, and so, I would, I would, my kids are like, 'cause we, I, I got one for a petting zoo one time, and, uh, and, and so, it's like, I want one of those, that is really cool. So, it, it's that kind of thing where the kids could walk into the neighborhood, the kids could come and see it. I love animals, I would want them to share it. It's the exact opposite of trying to create something that's stand-off, the exact opposite. I would want everyone to enjoy it. And we hope to, to build something like that, that people will. So, that's, um, that's our goal, and we are about 1,100 feet from anybody, from any house. So, meaning any existing home. So, it wouldn't, and anyone who moves in there will know, hey, this is a part of it. They won't be, it won't be an unexpected thing. I would like to build our house like one of the first things, the first home, so I can help build these other homes and manage them easier and closer and better. So, that's the goal. I'm sorry to take so long, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for giving us the information. You mentioned livestock, cows, and possibly llama?
Yeah.
And is there other, or is that all you're thinking about?
I was thinking of, we have a lot of snakes. My wife hates snakes. I'm thinking of a goat or a donkey. I hear both kill snakes. I don't know what's true, but something like that, you know?
So, one of the concern, I guess, one of the, the citizens had replied with a concern about the smell, um, how that would transition over to other neighbor houses if there's, I guess, strong winter. How is that gonna be addressed or dealt with?
Yeah, so, it's at the end of the cul-de-sac. That cul-de-sac basically goes in an, in an east-west direction, so it's at the end of the cul-de-sac or to the east of the cul-de-sac. Our predominant winds are north-south, right? And so, um, that wind will take it right up to the herd of cattle into the north, or it'll take it south to the homes, but they're, meaning i-if we have a northerner, but the homes are so far away, and we're, you know, we're just talking so few animals that I just can't imagine. I do not wanna live like in a barnyard, and I'm the closest one to it. It would not be anything, there's just no way it will be offensive to anyone. I would not allow that. And it's, I don't think with three, we have much larger animals, and a lot of them in some of our horse areas, we have a lot of horses in some neighbor, in one, in one place. And there's, I've never heard of a complaint. I know the owner very well. I just don't think that'll be an issue at all.
So, is the intention to have maximum of three at most, or is that a number that could change?
Well, I, I think we have to live, we, we have to be under the rules of what the city says, and I, I think it's three is, is what it is for that square footage, you know? I don't foresee, I don't foresee, yeah, I don't foresee having...
It's like one for one-third of an acre, was it something like that?
Right. He would have to have more than two acres to have additional animals.
Okay.
He's under that threshold.
Okay, 'cause I, yeah, I, I thought I saw something about one per one-third of an acre, and if that's the case, then he...
Correct, but it, there's stipulations that in order to have more, you have to have more than two acres, and he's under that threshold. He only has 1.9. So, he would be limited to three.
Okay, so, and that would be put into, I guess, a stipulation or condition as to no more than three, or is that just a ordinance that he just cannot have more than three?
Correct. It's, it's already addressed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counsel, any, Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of, couple of items. So, Phase Two, we're reducing from 20 lots to nine lots, and clearly, you're making room for the big lot on the end of the cul-de-sac. But what sort of, I, I noticed on one of those maps, you could see where the old lots were, and they've, they, clearly, all the lots have shrank in addition to the end. So, what sort of, what did you find as you were selling these lots, or what sort of changed your mind on why to reduce it by the 11?
Right, so, we have not sold any lots. We've not taken any deposits, and specifically because, I need to know my costs first, and I, we're gonna try to do that by the, by next week. We, we, and I thought, since this was around this time, I oughta finish up here and then, and then put it out to the market, but, so hopefully, next week, we'll, we'll start. I've shown people lots, and, but I've, we've not taken deposits. So, I believe that we will, just like Red Hawk, we've taken three lots and made them two. We've taken two lots and made them one. I think eight times, we, we've redeveloped it, you might say. I think we'll do the same here, but which ones those will be, I don't know, and so, I love it because it changed the rhythm. If you go in Red Hawk and where these are 40 and 50-foot lots, it's like, whoa, that one's wider. Whoa, this one's really wide. It changes it up, and it changes the rhythm, which I think, which I learned that in Red Hawk, and, and thinking, okay, I'm looking for positions to do that here. Well, when it came to Phase Two, I thought, well, we oughta just make them all large lots here, 'cause someone will want large lots, and we say, here, here, we can do it. We will do it in Phase One also, but this will, we'll just do it all there, because it was gonna be originally, back when we did this, I thought, okay, this will be the smaller, the smaller homes, and they'll be narrower. And that was coming out of a Red Hawk product. But things change. I see this as being more of a family community. I do see the empty nester being here. That's why I wanted to go from 3,000 to 2,700 feet. I actually have some pictures. One of our, one of my favorite homes, if I could just do this, let me guys... One of my favorite homes in Red Hawk is, is a home on the corner, and, and it's 2,700 feet, and it's, and it's, but it was one of the most expensive homes per square foot. It's got like a zinc roof, and you can see it in there. It's got zinc interlocking steel, um, siding, which is really hard to do and expensive. So, this is not about, like, lowering the quality or nothing for the 2,700 feet. It's, it's about just saying, there's an element of people that are empty nesters that just, they would like a one-story, and they would like 2,700 square feet. So, that, that's the other element of doubling these lots up. There's the other element that wants a one-story lock-and-leave, but I just don't see, I don't think there's any difference from 2,700 to 3,000. I couldn't see it if I'm, and this is my world, my business, I couldn't tell the difference. The one that we built here for some Capel people that stayed in Capel, it's the, it's one of the coolest little, one of the coolest homes, period. It happens to be smaller, too, that, and I, and then there's another home there with a, with a chimney that faces right on to, it's behind our screening wall at, um, on Denton Tap, and, and that is one of my funnest holes, homes that we did. It's, it's kind of an English Cotswold style, and it's, it's 2,700 feet, too, one-story. And I thought, you know, if we couldn't build those, too, those are two of my favorite homes, Red Hawk. It's like, man, we, I just wouldn't want to exclude it for just, hey, it was 3,000, that's what you negotiate at the front. It's like, yeah, and we all make mistakes. I probably just set, set it a little too high for no good thoughtful reason.
Okay, that helps, 'cause you actually answered my other question, is why go from 3,000 to 2,700. So, it sounds like just some vision change over time between going to some bigger lots as well as some smaller houses for empty nesters, so that makes sense.
Yeah, and I would love to see the mul-, I would love to see just different dynamics going in there. Larger homes, smaller homes, all cool, all artistic, and that's what gives the uniqueness and funness of a community, I think. I think you see that in Kessler Park, which is uniquely, we don't got the topo that they have there, but we can have that unique artistic look to it. I think that's what we'll have.
Councilmember Hill.
So, I received a notice as well about this, and I opened it up, and so, oh, Terry's just making bigger lots, and it's like, no big deal, throw it away, didn't make any calls. But then, when you get into the details, we talk about reducing the size of the houses from 3,000 to 2,700. Terry, I'm sure you remember this, but you had a lot of opposition when you first started this 10 years ago. And part of the agreement that you made was to do houses that were a minimum of 2,800. I just pulled up the, the approved PD from 10 years ago. So, and then, when you talk about having animals there, um, I'm worried about people in the future. You say you're gonna build your house right away, and I, I hope that you would, so people would know what they're getting into, but there are no guarantees. And you, you say you're just gonna have a llama, or maybe a, a cow, or something like that, but you may not be there forever. I mean, you sell it to somebody, and they decide they wanna have peacocks there, and it, or roosters and chickens. So, I, I'm concerned about the, the future noise and the inconvenience it would pose to the surrounding neighbors who buy these homes. And, you know, especially if this house doesn't get built until further down the road, you know, there'll be a lot of unknowing people buying homes. Speaking of which, that house at 200 Hollywood, that's directly adjacent to your property, the real estate agent didn't even tell them that there was a, a development that was gonna start, and within a month, you started clearing the lots. Now, that's none of your, your responsibility, but Realtors are not always forthcoming about what, what the future may hold, so I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about that. Now, I, I wanted to ask, um, Ms. Boswell, you, you had stated the accessories were totaling less than 8,500 square feet, and that was based upon it, the aggregate total having to be less square footage than the primary residence, but his range was between 4,000 and 8,500.
Right, so, our discussion with, with Mr. Holmes was, as he stated earlier, he was coming in with some items. He said, oh, I want, you know, I was thinking about this and this, and I said, okay, I want you to put together everything that you think you might want, and we're gonna take it at one time, so that it's not coming back and forth to, to council. So, um, a lot of the items are ranges of things that he's looking to, to have. So, I'm just trying to get over here. So, he knows he wants to do an accessory dwelling unit for his parents, so that's 1,700. And then, we were looking at a barn. Well, that's anywhere from 1,000 to 2,600. So, that 8,500 is a max, um, but like he said, he, he may not build, you know, he may build 1,000 square feet. He may build, you know, both...
But if, if he only builds a small home, sort of, say, 4,000 square feet, he's still allowed to build 8,500 of accessory buildings?
This is what he's asking for, and then, that's why it's phrased in that, in that manner, so that, um, I'm not sure if he has his house totally laid out yet, but it's in that range. An accessory building, like I said, is typically, um, less in square footage than what the main structure is. So, we said, okay, your dream, what is your dream?
Right.
And so, he put some numbers to those accessory buildings.
Yeah.
And, and that's, you know, he's asking for that, for you to grant that.
Yes.
And that'll be your decision, whether to grant that or not.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Holmes, don't, don't get me wrong, I appreciate your vision and wanting to have your family near you, and, you know, your father being a woodworker and wanting to have a shop, I, I don't see any issues with that. It's just kind of the, the livestock that concerns me and how it may impact future residents of that neighborhood. You know, we're supposed to look long-term, what the, um, what the vision of the developments are gonna be, so, you know, I'd like to, for us to keep that in mind. But I, I definitely think that we, we need to abide by the original commitment that he made of 2,800. I understand he wants to back down from 3,000 to 2,700, but the original agreement, when there was lots of opposition in the room, was 2,800. And I would, I would hazard a guess, if they, if people knew the changes that were being proposed here, there would be a lot more opposition here today than there is now. And with that, I'll turn it over to someone else.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? We do still have the public hearing. Mary, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, let's go ahead. This is a public hearing. We do have five people that have signed up to speak. Each will be called in the order that they registered. These are limited to five minutes per speaker. Our first speaker is Rajakula. Please give us your name and address for the record, sir.
Rajakula, I live at 1180 East Sandy Lake Road, adjacent to the property being talked about now. Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, everybody in the room. First of all, I'm here, I guess, because the notice just stated that there were a bunch of large, which are getting bigger. And I said, that's fine, like Councilman Markel said. It wasn't a concern, I threw it out, I said, you know, that's fine, you know, less homes, it's not a problem for me as, as a neighbor. Then I got to know through friends and in the newspaper that there are a lot of other amendments proposed to the, to the actual change, and then, I was really taken by surprise that how come city does not notify all the neighbors and then the citizens about the changes? And that was, that's my main reason to be here, to talk about that. Really, it would help for the city to kind of laid out the notice, listing all these big changes. I mean, I call them very big changes, so they were not listed in that notice at all. That was one. That being said, when I found out about this yesterday, I reached out to Mr. Holmes, and then he texted back, and then he took me out for a tour today. And it is pretty cool what he's doing. I gotta tell you that. Everything he said, I was listening, it's true. I mean, I lived there. I've lived there almost nine years now. I don't have any neighbors, and everything that he told is true, in a sense that north to us is so much of livestock, cattle, actually, the gun club, which he said is true. The boars, they ruin my yard all the time. That's true. Deer, everything that he mentioned about that is true. So, when he took me out there and showed me where he's actually planning to build this, his vision, back, it is backed to everything that comes in every day, including snakes, what he mentioned. That's, that's absolutely true. So, after looking at it, the request that he's making of three livestock, I, I would be concerned if I'm right next to him, I'm not. I'll be honest with you. That is something that is for the council to decide, but I think he's doing a very cool thing within, and he's not really bringing in, bringing in anything foreign into the nature. I think it is, it will gel in perfectly well because of the cattle and all this animals in the back. So, that's one thing I have to tell you. And then, rest of it is up to the council regarding the other stuff. I mean, I don't have any issues with the size reductions and of the lots and out of the, actually, the increasing, reducing the number of lots and then increasing the size of lots and all of that stuff. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight. Our second speaker is Ms. Marla Williams. Good evening. Please state your name and address.
Hi there, I'm Marla Williams, 137 Hollywood. I want to start by saying I did receive the notice, one of the, I guess, one of the few people I've spoken to who did. And I called on June 13th, because I was kind of unclear as to what exactly was being asked for. I spoke with the planning department. Actually, I called, left a message, they called, left a message, I called back, to be precise on that. I asked specifically, what is he asking for? Pretty straightforward question. I was told a house for his parents and a decorative windmill. That's it. And I'm speaking with a live employee of the city, and I can't get a straight answer. Clearly, more was being requested. The words barn, cabana, aviary, livestock, or that, the combined lots would be over one acre in size. There was no mention to reduce the square footage, nor was there any discussion of the early building permits, when originally the community building was supposed to be built first, per my recollection, before anything else got built. I'm assuming there still is a community building. You know, that's probably the most disappointing aspect of this whole thing, is to not get a straight answer from the city, to not be given a notice in the mail that describes accurately what's being requested. I guarantee the neighbors I have spoken with, no one understood that livestock was being requested, nor that all these other buildings were being requested. I did, on June 27th, speak with Matt Steer, and I was told that it's common knowledge, quotation marks there, that if you have one plus acres, you can have lines livestock. I guess I'm just ignorant of that fact, that in Capell, you can have livestock if you have over an acre, nor did I know that he was putting together more than an acre, because until I spoke with Matt Steer, I wasn't even invited to come see the plans. My belief is that the whole need for this livestock is merely a play to reduce his property taxes by having an ag exemption. I've had a friend who's done it, on their property up in Hickory Creek. It's a nice, big tax savings. All you have to do is put an ad in the paper once a year, saying that you've got a donkey to breed. Doesn't even have to have a working phone number, just, you know, just an address to mail to, and you save thousands and thousands of dollars off your property taxes. And to me, that's what this reeks of. Speaking of reeking, we can smell the landfill, most days, coming from Louisville. Round Grove, east of Round Grove, east of 35. What makes us think we're not going to smell livestock animals kept in a confined space? I don't know. And, you know, we weren't really clear on the aviary, what that meant. Is he keeping pet birds? Now, apparently, it's a rehab facility. I'm not opposed to a rehab facility, but now we're running a business out of a neighborhood, and I didn't think that was allowed. Very confusing, what I'm hearing here tonight versus what I've been told. I'm glad that apparently no lots have been sold, because people need to know exactly what they're buying into. Personally, I wouldn't spend a million dollars on a custom home to find out I'm going to be living next to a cow, or a llama, or anything else. That would definitely weigh in my decisions. So, I'm opposed to this request, firstly, because the notification by the city was improper, in my opinion, completely improper. Secondly, I don't think it's needed in order for him to sell his homes. He's able to sell them in other areas, I don't know why he couldn't sell them. And I'm a little concerned about the, oh, you know, everyone can come see my farm animals. Once again, is that a business? Or is that, you know, I don't know. I'm very confused by what he's now saying it's supposed to be. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our third speaker is Mr. Christopher Williams. Good evening. State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Counsel. Christopher Williams, 137 Hollywood, as well. I have mainly questions as opposed to necessarily statements, and a lot of them, as I was typing them out, Councilman Hill also hit on. A couple of things that weren't addressed that I just don't know. Going from 21 lots to nine lots, and also with the possibility of an ag exemption, I don't know how it affects the property taxes that Capell is expecting to receive from this development. I don't know what will happen. Mr. Holmes' vision sounds very lovely, and very nice, and grand. I don't know what would happen when Mr. Holmes does not own this property anymore. And we all know that that can happen in five years, 10 years, or two years. We don't know. And if it is zoned to have a shop, his father may be doing woodworking to begin with, and the person who buys it next may be doing metallurgy, maybe fixing cars out of it, may have a couple of, you know, rusty cars out in front, and deciding to fix them out of the barn, or out of the shop. We don't know. We don't know what's going to happen. I do also have an issue, I am an attorney, and I have an issue with the communication that was made. I read it, I couldn't tell any of this stuff, even though I am familiar with the law, and with how to read that type of thing. Couldn't tell any of the stuff was proposed, and I guarantee you that none of our other neighbors were able to tell as well. And the final thing is, I'm still not clear, even after the discussion, if what is on that slide is what is actually going to be built, or whether the 8,500 total, or 8,500 square feet total ADU can be basically divvy up in any way that he wants, after it is approved, or whether that specifically is what is being approved in this request. I don't know that. I don't know if you guys know that, and maybe you do, and maybe it's all clear, but I don't know that. So, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thanks for coming tonight. Our fourth speaker is Julie Mercado. Good evening, welcome, and please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Julie Mercado. I am at 200 Hollywood, which Mr. Hill was talking about earlier. I just wanted to note, if that was true, we were told by the selling realtor that they didn't need to disclose anything, because the community wasn't actually going to be built. And then a few months later, the entire side forest was gone. So, I just wanted to discuss this, where I don't feel like the communication was okay. We didn't, I didn't get a letter in the mail, as well as, I talked to a lot of people, that everyone was saying that they weren't informed. Of course, the concern about this smell, that we've already discussed, from livestock, it's extremely windy, but I don't know if that's just a wind tunnel that's been formed, from taking down all the trees. My concern is also noise. I don't know what it's like to live by an aviary or a woodshop. Also, this is a family thing, I understand, it sounds great, but what's stopping them from taking away property lines in the future, and making a bigger plot of land, more livestock and such? Or in the future, whenever he sells, can they buy multiple lots, and then take down those property lines? I'm not sure of laws. Also, another thing, I'm not sure about this, but when we bought the house, we were talking about building a guest house, because we have almost .7 acre, and we were told that guest houses are not allowed in Capell. So I just, I feel like this would be a great opportunity for everybody to have, but not everyone in Capell is allowed to do this. And is this opening it up in the future, that we're allowed to make guest houses on our property that's not attached to the house? I just feel like this has become, business deal is turning personal. And then also about the property tax, it's hard to watch all of this, when everyone's property taxes are going through the roof, and it's hard to believe that he's not going to be getting a livestock exemption from this, as well as having a 1,700 square foot guest house that's going to be permanently resided in by parents, that could have easily been on their own property, and having to pay property tax on it. So, it's also hard to watch, when we're all struggling with these things, and he's getting this from Capell, that other people don't have the opportunity to have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thanks for coming tonight. Our fifth and last speaker is Michael Mercado. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Michael Mercado, 200 Hollywood Drive, as well. All the points I was probably going to bring up have been brought up already, my wife, Marla, other speakers. I just want to put this forward to you, so, you know, I mean, we're all along Hollywood Drive, we've all been affected. I get it, like, it's a nice opportunity for, and, you know, initially, my wife is really for it, because it's, you know, she really loved the privacy of the forest there, and now it's gone. That's fine. But I'm mostly not opposed to having nice homes and neighbors back there as well. But, you know, no one's really been affected about as much as we have. We're in that, if you saw that development, we're in that 90-degree angle at corner, so we've borne the brunt of it. But even then, I just wanted basically, I don't have anything new to add, other than just to kind of bring up some of the, emphasize some of the points Councilman Hill brought up, which is to really think of the future. I mean, that does sound great. If that's what's happening, great. But what's, there's nothing in here about what's going to guarantee this in the future, future sellers, what will that mean for the neighbors, you know? We live directly across the creek from that. So right now, we have a good tree cover and all that, and he's right, the wind does tend to cut north-south, rather than east-to-west, so, you know, theoretically, it would be minimal. I don't know that. But, you know, this is one of those decisions where you make it, and then you can undo it, or it's very difficult to undo. And so, I want you to at least consider, along with the points that everyone has made here tonight, the effect it's going to have on the neighbors today, going forward, next year, five years, 10 years. We just moved there last year. Our daughter turned six, just finished kindergarten. We plan on being here through when she graduates high school, at the very least. So, we're in here for the long haul. And so, we're going to see these effects five, 10, 15 years from now. So that's where my head's at. Yeah, there's property taxes, yeah, there's all these points for making what's going to affect today, but that, ultimately, that's what's driving our, me and my wife's thinking, and a lot of the neighbors as well. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thanks for coming tonight. That is the end of our public speakers. Counsel, I'll turn it over to you for discussion. Councilmember Mayor Protem Matthews, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Boswell, I have a few questions. How many houses in City of Capell permits, that city issued permits for livestock? Do you know?
Excuse me. I don't know, but single-family zoning districts does have a provision in there that you are allowed to have livestock. The majority of houses in Capell don't have the land acreage to accommodate that. But there are definitely houses in Capell that do have that acreage, and do accommodate livestock.
So maybe my question is, we have an issued permit to have livestock, but this ask is to allow livestock with the permit, correct?
No, sir, it's not.
It's not?
No.
Okay.
So, with the acreage that he, that is proposed, that 1.9 acres, he's already allowed to have the livestock. The ask is for the location of, you know, the barns, or where the livestock is located in relation to the houses on that lot. So a typical lot, you know, is probably more rectangular or linear. This is more of a cul-de-sac, so it's a very unique situation in terms of the way the lot is presented. But it does back up to a common area. The next house, probably south or east of it, actually, if you look on the screen there, if you can see the cul-de-sac in the yellow, and so, directly behind him, where it says, like, Phase 1, that's part of the common area, or the creek area. And to the north, it's all vacant. So probably to the next house is probably a good, I don't know, 150, 200 feet to the south. So there's a large, open, common area, before you reach houses to the south of it. Obviously, the houses in that cul-de-sac, you know, they're adjacent to it. So the ask is really for the location of the animals on the lot, or the housing of the animals on the lot, in relation to the houses on that lot itself. The lots outside of it, so lot, this is Lot 5R, so Lot 4, and let's say 6, it would meet the requirements. So really, what they're asking for is just for the location of the residential houses within the Lot 5 itself, if that makes sense.
Well, I just wanted to be clear. With the 1.9 acreage-
Yes, sir.
-he's allowed to have livestock with existing ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Next question.
I just wanted to clarify, point on that question.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hill?
I just wanted to ask, Ms. Boswell, in a PD, granting a PD, isn't he only granted what we give him? He doesn't get that, to be allowed to have livestock, only if we say so? He's not granted by right, correct?
No. No, so-
Mary, well, that really calls for a legal inclusion. The way the ordinance is written, it's not part of the zoning ordinance.
Bob, Mr. Hager.
Yes.
We are really having trouble hearing you. You're coming in very muffled.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'll try to speak up. Is that better, Mayor?
A little bit. Not really.
I'm sorry, I'll try to speak as loud as I can. That is under our animal ordinance, and they are allowed, although there is a zoning component to it, if the PD does not address it, even if this were not a PD condition, if Mr. Holmes' lot, 5R, was big enough to accommodate animals, then he would be entitled to have whatever animals that the size of that lot would permit. So, the fact that you have a PD regulation would be to not address, if it did not address that issue, then it would not otherwise be allowed, right? Is that your question? That's not true. Under the ordinance, if a lot's big enough to accommodate it, then he would be entitled to it, as long as he met the other requirements, as far as its adjacency to residential lots.
Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on that, you are talking about the ordinance that it does allow, if you allow it is big enough, that one-third, I guess, acre, you could have a livestock. But at the same time, the condition D, we're trying to make an exception here, isn't that correct? Because it does talk about that it should not be, no livestock should be within 100 feet of any residence, but we're saying we're going to allow that at the same time, the number 2, D2, which also talks about that it cannot be within 10 feet of any residential zone property. But we're trying to make an exception of those two conditions. Isn't that right?
So, it's the houses within his own lot.
What?
We're not talking about the houses on the adjacent lots that are the neighbors. We're talking about, his own house can be within 100 feet of where he's keeping these animals. That's what we're talking about. And that the-
But if you look at the ordinance, specifically talks about it cannot, but then we're changing that to where he is being allowed to have that exception.
For Lot 5R.
On his own property.
On his own property. That's all it's addressing, is his own property. He has to still be within 100 feet of every adjacent lot to him. He's saying, okay, my house is here, between here and where the barn is, is like 92 feet, or something like that. So he's saying, okay, within my own lot, I know that I have a house, and I'm okay with having the animals within 100 feet of me. That's what we're saying.
Right. So, but you-
That's how it's written. That's the intent of what was written.
For the, for his property?
Exactly.
But if you, you're saying the ordinance is actually talking about adjacent property?
Correct. Right. Correct, right. So if you're his neighbor, Lot 4 or Lot 6...
The ordinance says 100 feet of any residence or occupied building.
And that's why it's written this way, to say, I know, I'm on Lot 5R, I'm residentially zoned, and I'm okay with having the, these three livestock animals, up to three livestock animals, within this 100-foot requirement.
So, all I'm saying is that we're, I understand you're saying, but this says any residence, we are making an exception in a way, aren't we?
To himself.
Okay.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, all right. Mayor Protem Matthew?
Yeah. Thank you, I want to come back to my second question.
Yeah.
That is, how many houses permitted in City of Kapel with the guest house?
With a guest house? I know we did one not too long ago, like at 748 De Forest, where they had a guest house, I think there's, you know of a couple?
There's a couple on Bethel.
A couple on Bethel, so, there are some, it's not a usual...
They are not attached, they're detached?
The one I'm familiar with is detached, yes, sir.
I know we did accommodate a person who had a wheelchair issue, right? We were expanding the garage and so on and so forth, but you are specifically talking about guest houses detached from the main house?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we have less than 10, 15?
I don't know that, I don't know that number.
Okay.
I know we did one in the last year and a half, two years.
Okay, one more question. The landscaping, we will not issue occupancy permit until the landscaping is complete.
Yes, sir.
Is that for that 10 houses, plus the common nine area?
For everything.
Okay, including the common areas, nine common areas, correct?
Right, most of the common areas are drainage areas, so there's an HOA lot, I think, up front, Lot 2X, which is the building that they, I believe Ms. Marla Williams was referring to, that's one of the first buildings that is required to be constructed, and it's right near the entrance of the subdivision, and so...
So that's a community gathering, or a community area, what, common area?
Right, it's going to have a structure on it that they'll use for, is it like gardening sales every couple, couple weeks every year kind of thing, it's a common area, yes, sir.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Council, any other questions? Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. In the Phase Two, so it's true you can have animals if you're an acre, is that what the stipulation is?
Right, so...
The animal ordinance?
Right, so even in the zoning district for a single-family estate district, which kind of rolls down into the other ones, it says, "The keeping of dogs, cats, other normal household pets, limited to four animals over six months old, no more than three large animals, specifically horses, cattle, sheep, can be maintained per acre of lot area, swine and poultry are expressly prohibited," so you can't have roosters or chickens. And then, in the actual Section 9, which is more the animal ordinance, it speaks to, you know, how many livestock you can have per, let's see here, yeah, the overall area, which is less than one-third of an acre for each cow or horse kept or keep of said animals that can be cared for under sanitary conditions. So, for what he has is a maximum of three. You have to be over two acres to get more.
Okay, none of the other lots in Phase Two are an acre, is that right? Is that, is Lot 5 the only one that's going to be that big? Is that right?
I don't know off the top of my head.
He's saying yes, yeah, okay, thanks.
Councilmember Brianna Hinojosa Smith?
Actually, Mayor, that was my question, I was just curious if there were any other lots that would be, potentially could come back and ask for an exception, in being able to have livestock as well, but, I guess, for clarification, if I heard correctly, it can only be Lot 5R, right?
That is what Mary said, yes, due to the size of the lots.
And I guess my other question would be, because it seems like we're, there's a lot of unknown here, right? Like, they're asked, I guess, there's requests for things that may or may not happen, we're not really sure, we kind of want it granted as a just-in-case, but, the applicants can still come later and ask for additional changes, right?
Right, so any request would have to come back before you. Our intent was, okay, Terry, we know you want to live here, you said you're interested in doing these things, let's try to get it all addressed at this point, instead of trying to piecemeal it and coming back for one thing after another. So, you know, it was our request for him to put his, you know, what he wanted, or what he thinks he would want it, on there, whether or not he ends up building it is another story.
And I guess my, I guess my question, or my reason for asking that is, that as we go through these different, we've got Phase One, Phase Two, but along the way, there could be a request from maybe somebody who wants to build that says, I'd like to be able to have livestock, so can I, you know, potentially have an acre and do something similar to what we're doing in Lot 5R?
And that's anywhere in the city, they can do that.
Right, okay, thank you.
Because it's not just the acreage, sorry, I'm just going to kind of expand.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
It's not just the acreage that's in question, it's also the other items that go along with maintaining the livestock, so the distance requirements. So even if you have an acre, it also depends on other factors.
Right.
Head Councilmember Hill, and then John. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Boswell, I just wanted to ask you about the, a couple of questions about the guest houses. So, they are allowed in Kapel, given adequate lot size?
So, they are not allowed in Kapel, but because of certain unique situations, or they can request that.
Okay.
And that's why it's a PD condition.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
So, next question, if, in the future, Mr. Holmes or whoever else owns that house, can they rent the guest house as a short-term rental, and claim that the big house is their primary residence?
I would say yes, and Bob, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is yes.
Right now, it says owner-occupied, so Terry's not the owner-occupied, I don't know if he plans to sell it, but we generally, if you own two homes in town, we've tried to narrow that down to only owner-occupied, so if he doesn't occupy it as primary residence, he would not be able to sit out as a short-term rental, under our current ordinance.
Okay, that makes sense.
Thanks for clarification.
And I guess it's not within our purview to be able to ask Mr. Holmes if he's seeking an ag exemption, is that correct, Bob? I'm straight here?
Yeah, it wouldn't qualify, it's not big enough.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Long?
I wanted to know what the requirements were to get an ag exemption on the property.
Councilmember Neville?
Apologize, I was chatting with the mayor, did you, Bob, did you say that it would meet the requirements of an ag exemption?
It would not.
Would not?
No, it does not.
Excellent.
Just because you have livestock on there is insufficient in Dallas County, and that's in Dallas County, and there'd be no way that the appraisal district would grant a grant exemption, just because you had livestock on a 1.9-acre site, it's primary use.
Councilmember Nevels?
Mayor, I'd like to request to go into executive session to consult with the city attorney.
All right, we will recess into executive session in the first-floor conference room, thank you. We have adjourned from executive session for consultation with the attorney, and we will be rejoining the city council meeting in five minutes.
Mayor, I would like to address applicant. So, Mr. Holmes, if you don't have the livestock, is it a deal-breaker for you?
I think I may not move there then, you know, and do what, kind of my family, kind of what we, we'll find some other place else to do it.
Right.
I can go back, I'd probably just go back to the 21 lots, and probably take down the tree and leave it the way it is, just leave it the exact way it was planned.
Right.
Yeah, because...
Although you're getting ready to pave in the next couple of days?
Do what?
Didn't you say you were getting ready to pave in the next couple of days?
No, no, Phase One.
Phase One, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but, I mean, I don't want to take any rights away that everyone else has in the city, right?
Right.
I wouldn't, so I don't know what you're saying necessarily, but I mean, that, I don't know if that...
No, I'm just asking you if...
Because everyone can have, I mean, my good friend Mark Brandonberg's got 15 horses.
Right.
It's right next to the ball field, right next to, there's not an issue with smell, they're big horses.
Yes.
There's a lot of them, there's neighbors, we built homes on cottonwood, multiple homes.
No, I was just trying to understand how important that aspect is to your project.
I would like to have the right to have animals, I'm not asking for something unique, it will never hurt anyone, I would never do something to hurt someone, I mean, I would not do that, I can't imagine it not being a benefit to everyone who lives in the community, I can't imagine how it would not be, it's open.
We, we're having trouble hearing you, Terry.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's open, it's open space, it's vistas, it's viewpoints, it's like, I think everything I would want in the community, I would think everything that everyone would want in the community too, no different than Red Hawk is, you build stuff that's cool and visually acceptable to look at, and what people want to look at. I've studied that for 40 years, to know what that is, to meet people's needs, to serve people, I think, I know this will do that, I have no question in my mind whether people will think it's cool, and will want to walk back there just to check it out all the time. I hope people from outside the neighborhood does it, but, you know, it's hard to get to because of, because of, you know, we don't have an adjacent walkway.
Would you be willing to give up roosters?
Well, you can't have, you can't have chickens anyways.
Okay.
In the City of Kapel, yeah, you cannot have chickens.
Well, I do, I know that there have been some chickens in Kapel, so...
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, and I would, yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Holmes, I have a couple of questions. One of the issues that I have is that the original plan, PD, this was never mentioned, about your plans to make this bigger lot and have livestock, and back then, I'm sure the people would have had an opportunity to attend here and voice their opinion if this was actually presented at that time. So to me, this is actually a piecemeal where you had proposed certain development and had been granted, and now you're coming back with something different where a lot of people really don't know, as this being the original plan. So I'm going to ask you straight, would you be willing to give up your right to have livestock on that property?
No, sir.
Okay.
Everyone else has that right, I just don't understand, I don't understand, the only thing we're asking for is that they would be closer to my house than 100 feet.
So...
Right, I think that's all we're asking for, and closer to my parents' house than 100 feet, otherwise, everyone can have it in the city, unless I'm, unless I don't understand the law, but I believe that's true.
But the original plan to not have that big lot, would the possibility of having livestock, which...
Right, it had 21 homes.
Right.
What would the city prefer? 21 homes, I can do that.
So, wait, are you saying you're willing to go and put 21 homes, or the original plan?
If I don't get approved, I will be forced to do that, I'm not out here trying to, you know, you guys are, I know many of you people, you know, I respect you, I'm not, I'm not trying to negotiate, but I'm saying I will be forced with the decision of, if I can't do that, I do that somewhere else, and I make this a profit center, and that means you get as many lots as you can, you remove the tree, and I go somewhere else.
Okay, but you're not willing to go ahead and give up voluntarily the right to have livestock?
No, the city ordinance, it's, you can do it anywhere in the city.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to ask Councilmember Hill, do you mind if you and I engage in a question and answer with each other?
Sure.
So I was hearing a lot of discussions, so I'm going to bounce a couple of things off of you. If you had the option of being able to limit the future use of the property after the guest house or the property was subdivided at some point in the future, like 15 or 20 years, and at that point, the livestock was limited, would that be acceptable in your view?
Limited in that the lot size becomes too small?
Yes, under city ordinance.
Well, I think, I can't speak for all the surrounding neighbors, and I think that's part of the issue here at hand as well, is the way the notice was done. part of the issue here at hand as well, is the way the notice was done. And I would anticipate much more opposition than we've seen here. So I'm not going to speak for what other people would do. You know, I'm also, I'm concerned about people who may move by the houses in the phase one and, you know, the farm isn't built yet, and then they, all of a sudden pops up and they're surprised by it, and have buyer's remorse and, you know, want to move.
Well, I suspect that we could add in, you know, some type of agreement that the lots won't be occupied until this establishment is completed. That would be, I don't think that would be unreasonable.
Well, I don't know that Mr. Holmes is ready to make such a big move and investment in the, at that piece of property.
Agreed. We could, that would be something we could address with him. So I'm struggling with the, the concept that I'm a big property owner, right? And this is his property. And if he's willing to give up the 100-foot rule on his own property, under the city code, the animals are allowed. And I'm really, that's where I'm struggling. So, you know, I'm looking for a, some type of compromise or some way that we can get through that while still, and, you know, the, the, the property owners in the area, I understand Councilmember John's concern that, you know, the PD is changing to allow that. You know, that's one of the things that, that's why it comes before this council to, to vet that and make sure that that is agreeable, so that's part of the process. Okay, I'll, I'll let the rest of the council chime in. The far left-hand, or far right-hand side of the, the chamber has been awfully quiet. Councilmember Long, you have any comments?
Yes, I do. I, you know, most of you know my background, you know, and I was raised on a farm. And so, and I had cows right next to our property line in the house that I lived in. And I understand that if you've never been in that situation, you may not consider, you may feel it's really something inappropriate to have, and it's a nuisance of some kind. It was not a nuisance to us, that's not a nuisance to have those three animals there, and so I have no reason to question. I like what he's done. I, I think he's, he's, he's developing something that's unique. It's not a major nuisance, and he's done making some sacrifices as well. And as you said, he's the one that invested the money in the thing. If he's willing to do this, to cut back possibly on his, his profits or revenue for the, for the land in order to do this and to have this kind of unique situation, to me, there's no significant nuisance at all there, because I've lived in that environment or grew up in that environment.
I think after hearing everything, I don't know that he is asking for something that the rest of Capel that isn't already allowed to have. I mean, the lot is going to be larger, and if I'm reading the tea leaves correctly a little bit, this is all happening partially because of this eagle's nest. This is sort of an accommodation for the scenario to sort of address the eagle's nest that wasn't originally anticipated. That's part of the reason, I mean, and I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but maybe we would not be sitting here discussing this had it not been for that situation. That sort of changed the complexion. So, we're not asking for any animal exceptions here, that's not what's ultimately being asked for. Anybody who has over, and correct me if I'm stating anything wrong, but if it's over an acre, you can have a limited number of animals, so that there's not an exception there. So, from what I am hearing, I, I think I would be in favor of approving what has been put forth in front of us and what went before PMZ and was pushed through all their due diligence too. They, they have also looked at this and voted on this. So I would be in favor of approving this after hearing all this.
Further comments over here?
Yeah, you know, I'm still kind of, I'm struggling with the original agreement, which was the 2,800 square feet homes. And I think that needs to definitely stay. The zoning regulations read that the accessory, the total square footage of accessory structures shall not exceed the square footage of the main building, which it may or may not, but I think we need to put that caveat in there that if, so we're still abiding by the zoning. So if he builds a 5,000 square foot house, you can have 5,000 square feet of accessory building. You know, this kind of range that was thrown out there, I, I do like to see that. You know, there was a diagram up there that showed rough square footages, because I would hate to see a barn that encompasses all that square footage and becomes a 4,000 square foot barn and there's no other windmills or aviaries or shops or anything like that. So I would like to use that as kind of a, a map or guideline for what the structures could possibly be in the future.
Well, but, Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go back to what Councilmember Hill had mentioned about the original plan development. And at that time, the residents had the opportunity to see what was going to be developed and had the opportunity to voice their opinion. And it was actually the plan development with the housing without any livestocks that it was approved. And this is actually like a piecemeal. I know Ms. Boswell talked about bringing all this together, but this is actually coming back after what's been, what's going to prove by the, by the council in the past, with the, you know, residents having the opportunity to talk about what's been presented. But now we're changing this, and to me, I think that's a major issue with the, the changes. Yeah, I understand, I understand about individual private right and the property rights, if that was actually originally planned and actually presented and it was approved, I have no problem with that. But this is a change from, significant change from original plan. And I'm going to have to say that I can't, I would like to go ahead and disapprove this request, since he's not willing to give up the right to own livestocks on that property.
Councilmember Carroll?
Just for clarification, the accessory buildings, the way it's written, the conditions are, those are limited to certain square, like the barns are limited to 2,600, no more than 20, he couldn't build a 4,000 square foot barn, is that the way it's written? Is that accurate? Or is there flexibility? I understood that each of those accessory buildings was limited to a maximum square foot per accessory building, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
So the way, the way it's being presented is that we asked him, okay, what structures are you looking to have on, on this site? And so he came up with all the different structures that, that he wanted potentially to have. I said, okay, that's step one. Step two is, I need to know how big are these things going to be? So I need to know, you know, so from our discussion, one of them is the accessory dwelling unit, which is the, the house for the parents, which he was looking at having as 1,700 square feet, with the, with the ability to expand that house at a later date in case it needed to be subdivided off of the existing lot, so that it would meet all the requirements of the, of the PD. You know, then the, the windmill, the aviary, the cabana, so there are ranges in there because he's having these different structures with these ranges is what we're looking at. And all of that, not to be more than 8,500 on the, on the high side. So, in terms of, you know, what he's presented is like a shop and a shop barn, not to be more than, somewhere between 1,000 and 2,600 square feet. Could he build something that's 4,000 square feet that wasn't the intent of it? The intent was, okay, this shop barn would be 1 to 2,000, 1 to 2,600, this barn would be 1,000 to 2,000, the aviary, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
That was, that was the intent.
Okay, and that's the way I understood it, is that those were the maximum per structure, per these different structures, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's, I just wanted to...
If you break that into, like, that's fine with me.
To, to, to have a maximum...
Maximize, yeah, because I don't intend to do...
And to address one of the other things, as I know Councilmember Hill had brought up, the 2,800 square foot, and that goes into some history that I'm familiar with, but if the limit was set at 2,800 square foot versus 2,700 square foot, what kind of impact would that have on your plans or your, your...
Yes, the...
What impact would that have on you?
Yeah, the 2,800 feet was in phase two only, and it was on the, remember those 21 lots? It's on the first two lots, they're on the north side of the street, and the first two lots that are on the left-hand side or the, the south side of the street. So it was only those four lots that had the 2,800 restriction. We could do smaller because we're on a smaller zoning in there, SF7, I think. So, am I concerned about the 20, those, keep those 28, that's absolutely fine. The, it's the other ones that I'm concerned, those will be much larger homes, I believe, because they're bigger lots now, that's, that's a non-issue. But it's the other ones on the south side where there's some homes, I think this is better for the highway people too, if, if we, if we don't have larger looming homes over them, we're about four feet higher vertically than them, I think that would be a benefit to them. Why, why not allow a smaller home? And I think it benefits everyone. And I, and I, none of us in the room, I don't believe, could tell the difference from a 3,000 foot home to 2,700 visually, doesn't affect the values, these homes will be, exceed the values of, you know, because of the detail, and it's going to be...
So to understand the 2,800 square foot requirement from a decade ago or whatever was just on those four lots?
Four lots.
It was not on any of phase one, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, so that was, up until this point, that was still a minimum of 3,000 square feet in phase one?
Yes.
Right, that, that had not changed, is that right?
Exactly. Phase two...
Right. So, no, you can stay, Terry. So the, the phase two, which is the SF7, the minimum square lot size is 2,400 square feet. So that's where they were saying at least, these many homes have to be 2,800 square feet, so it was actually a bump up. Does that make sense?
So the, so the existing, as it stands today, phase two, they only have to be 2,400 square feet?
Right.
But that's on the, when you had 20, well, we have, today we have 20 lots, right?
21.
21 lots is what you have?
Yeah, 20 lots.
But now... Okay, I'm trying to think. It seems like, do those need to be, phase two, those, those are going to be bigger homes now, right? I mean, because they're bigger lots, right? So it's just, you're going to build, build bigger homes on those lots anyway?
Right, but the requirements on the phase two really say 2,400 square feet with certain, I think it was like lot one and 20...
Those had to be bigger?
Those had to be bigger.
I get that.
Yes, sir. So what he was asking for was on phase one, that were there required to be 3,000 square feet to bump it down to 2,700 square feet? So I think there's a little bit of disconnect on, on that 2,800 number.
Okay. Not to put Councilmember Hill on the spot, but I was curious how that changes, because I'm, I'm okay with going 27 to 28 or something like that, but I was just curious, since it sounds like that was only on specific lots anyway, does, does that change?
And if we'd like to make the 2,400 foot lots 27 also, I'm okay with that. So we raise in phase two...
Make those bigger?
We lower them slightly in phase one. This will be very few, if any, will be that. I just think that since we're here and we got all, we got the opportunity to fix everything, I, I agree with what you're saying about, am I trying to retrade it in a sense? I am, but you live and learn. I don't, I know more now today, after building Red Hawk, than I knew 10 years ago. And I, and I feel like I know the city better, and we, and we all get older, and with the aging population, I think we're trying, I'm just trying to build something that's not of a lower quality, but it's a higher quality and meets the needs of the people more. And it's not a buzzword, it's, it's real. It's, it's a real thing. And I, I mean intuitively, you guys will know whether you know people like that and whether that fits the ticket of our people in Capel and the aging of our, of our people or not. I think it does.
Mayor Protem Viziu, Matthew. Hey, I got the mayor of Protem right.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Ms. Boswell. Can we go back on the slides to the amenities? Yeah. Question is, if we approve today, and they have to apply for permit for each of those items, correct? And will that come in front of the council?
No, it would not come in front of council.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Counsel, any other thoughts? Councilmember Long?
Yeah, I'm just sitting here thinking about the discussion that we just had. It appears to me that nothing, nothing has really changed. We've got, we're biting around the edges here, but there's nothing that's really changed. And if you're familiar with this developer, you know the quality of the work he's done, you know, I've been in many of his homes and subdivisions here. I didn't realize he was, had been a long time citizen for the, you know, a local guy, but I really, I really like the professionalism that he puts, that he's put into his product over the years. And I would defer to his judgment as it relates to the situation that, that Mark had about the size. And I think, you know, he's worked with this so much, he understands, he understands the internal, he understands the external views, you know, whatever, the way it looks. And so I, I, I still think that, you know, that what Mr. Holmes is doing is the appropriate way. I mean, it's his, his piece of property, and he wants to do it the, the very best that he can. And he's the guy that can do it. I mean, because he's been there, and like he said, he's learned over the years what Capel likes, what Capel wants, and the, and the structures and the, the look of subdivisions. And so I think that has to, that has to weigh on, I think, the, or should weigh on the, the square footage of the various houses and what his vision is, is to, is to giving us that.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
So I wanted to ask Terry just one more question about your Plan A and your Plan B. So Plan A, if you, if you keep this configuration like you're showing here, the, the tree with eagle's nest stays in perpetuity until they go away? the tree with eagle's nest stays in perpetuity until they go away and never come back?
I think two things. So we're, the answer is yes. I mean, I love these things, these are my buddies, right? I mean, I've spent a lot of money to preserve them. I mean, I mean, thousands, tens and tens of thousands of dollars to preserve them. So I just don't think you'd find someone else doing that, number one. That tree would be gone as soon as, thirty days after they vacate the nest, that tree's gone, and life goes on.
So, and so your Plan B would be, if we don't go forward with this, you go back to the twenty-one lot as soon as the fledglings fly out?
Oh, they're gone. No, they're, they've been gone in May. Yeah, so, so that, that is, that, that, when, when they, when they fledge, they, they do not go back to the nest, they, they roost in trees or in hollows of trees, they do not rest, nest in the nest, and then they'll come back in October. So we have a, we have an early, we have a nest disturbance permit in with the Fish and Wildlife, which comes out of Albuquerque, New Mexico is, who governs that. And so that's already there, they will address it next week because of vacations, basically. There's three women that, that manage that. They are, they will take care of that next, this next month. But, but no, our intent is to keep it, to keep this something cool for the city. I, I mean, all we heard about, when I knew this was going, what'd you hear about? What's happening down in Red Rock Lake, and the eagle's there, and the eagle's there? And I'm thinking, we got something that's more, much more special in Capel that no one knows about, and, and then my daughter, adult daughter, who, she was on, you know, would, would be on the Capel's mom kind of website, and someone would say, I, I think I saw an eagle over, over Andy Brown Park. And, and she's like, ooh, that's ours, you know, and this is before we let it out, or before it got out, that there were eagles. And so we tried to keep him quiet, because I didn't know if it was going to get the attention that it got down there. Fortunately, it, it did not. But that would became kind of like a dog and pony show down there, that I don't think we wouldn't want and wouldn't be good for the birds. So our whole thing was to keep it quiet, keep it safe for the birds. I didn't want people going there, I didn't want overselling the lots, let this be done, and then, so the answer is yes, we would keep them, we would, I think we would do exactly what everyone up here would do if it was your land. You would keep the birds, you'd do what's right, you, you would make less money, and that's okay, by the grace of God, that, that's okay, and you would try and keep life there.
But the, the Plan B, twenty, with the twenty-one lots, you would not keep that tree anymore after?
With twenty-one lots, you would keep it like as it is planned, yeah, and-
So that tree would go away?
Yeah, and-
And they would never come back, for sure? Because there wouldn't be a tree.
Well, they, they wouldn't go there. Now, will they, and this is the risk that we got to take, is will that tree live, because it's being built around, like, well, trees aren't going to live forever, right? Like us. So that tree's going to go away sometime, hopefully then they nest somewhere, or whatever. What they like about it, we've seen them fly off and fly back with a little perch in its mouth, and, and I think it goes to the ponds that's in the city of Capel, that's to, directly to the east of, of this tree, it's just dewy's. And so they come back with a little perch, so, and talking about Fish and Wildlife, if, if, if they have a good habitat, where, which obviously is food is huge, and if they have a successful nest, they're more likely to come back. The male is, is whose territorial, the female is not, they do not mate for life, but they do mate, they will likely mate the next season if they have a successful nest. They had two fledglings, both were healthy, both flew off, and so I think we back, got the perfect ingredient to have it be successful from here out, but the tree does got to survive, and hopefully it will. I mean, I'm putting a lot of money into hoping it, but it's, the tree is a fifty-fifty tree, right? All trees are fifty-fifty. I mean, will they, you know, who knows? I'm putting money on that it will. If it doesn't, you know, the tree dies, the nest's got to go away, you know? But I, but I feel like I've done my part.
You're protecting the tree out, outside of the, at the, at least at the drip line, right?
At the drip line, yeah, yeah. Yeah. And I moved the cul-de-sac-
When it, when we boil, boil it down-
Yeah.
If you get your livestock, we potentially get to have the eagles stay, and if, if you don't, they definitely are not staying, and the tree goes.
Yeah, but I don't like talking like this, you know what I'm saying?
I know, but that's the harsh truth-
I want to do it right.
Because we're, we're talking about give and take here.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I would feel like I'm, I'm being harmed almost, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And, and I don't like that from a, not just a pride standpoint, but it's like, man, why, why me? I've, I pay a lot of taxes and same with the buildings I own, I pay a ton of taxes. I mean, I, yeah, I've been here a long time, and, and I love it, and my siblings live here, and I think we love this place, you know? So I, I, I wouldn't want to say anything derogatory to, to anyone up here, you guys serve, and I, and I don't, and you guys, you know, you guys' time is amazing, I-
No, I, I respect what you're doing and the accommodations you're making for that, and at any point, I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, you are free to make a motion anytime.
I'd like to make a motion and close the public hearing and approve item ten with the following That the minimum home size be twenty-eight-hundred square feet. The total square footage of the accessories shall be less than the square, square footage of the main structure. And the accessory square footage is, or not to exceed the indicated square footage on that exhibit that's on the screen. And that's it.
I think if I added that up, that was a total of seventy-seven-hundred square feet.
Yes, but I'm saying that there, there's a range there, so-
Okay.
It, it would have to stay under whatever the, the size of the house, because that's, that, that is the zoning requirement, that the accessory structures are less than the main, the total square footage of the main building.
So if you said the accessory square footage is less than or as presented?
No, because the house is going to range between four and eight thousand square feet, so if he does a four-thousand-square-foot house, then he only gets four-thousand square feet of accessories. But the, the, the motion obviously is so you don't have one giant building, that this is a, a roadmap that we're following.
Okay, so I had the minimum house square footage is twenty-eight-hundred square feet, the total accessory, the total square footage of the accessory structures is less than the main structure, and the accessory square footage as indicated on this slide?
Yes.
Anything else?
That's it. Unless there were, were there conditions on their approval?
Oh, and conditions presented by P and Z?
Yeah, and the conditions presented by P and Z.
She can't speak right now. All right, we have a motion, is there a second? I have a second from Councilmember Long. Is there any discussion from the council?
Sorry.
Mayor, I saw you had your hand up, did you have something that you want to clarify or add?
I, I just wanted some clarification on the twenty-eight-hundred, was that just for phase one, or was that for the overall development?
Um, overall, that's, that's the minimum size.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Carroll?
I would like to modify the motion.
Make a motion, make a motion to-
I would like to move to amend the motion that's on the table. Everything as stated except that the total of the accessory building still be eighty-five-hundred square feet, which is the top of these ranges, as it was originally written.
Okay, I want to clarify.
Sure.
So you want to amend the original motion so that the square footage of the accessories, the total square footage of the accessories is less than eighty-five-hundred square feet?
Right.
I'm, I'm trying to think programmatically how that supersedes the previous motion, because he's saying it's less than the main structure.
If the main structure is only four-thousand square feet, these accessory buildings can only be four-thousand square feet. The way it was originally proposed was these accessory structures, two through seven here, could be a total of eighty-five-hundred square feet.
Okay, so this is in addition to the original motion, you're wanting to also stipulate that the square footage of the accessory structures must be less than eighty-five-hundred?
Which is the way it was originally proposed, I think.
All right, thank you. I understand.
Yeah.
I have a motion, is there a second? There is a second? All right, so this motion is to amend the previous motion, is there any discussion on this motion to limit the total number of square feet of the accessory structures to eighty-five-hundred square feet or less? Councilmember Hill?
The only discussion or point I wanted to make was that, that's what the base, the base zoning of Capel is, and I was just trying to keep it consistent rather than granting any more exceptions.
The, I understand, I think the way I read this is if he decided to build a nine-thousand square-foot house, then his accessory structures would still be limited to eighty-five-hundred, not the nine-thousand. Yours.
Yours.
Well, mine's still limited to eighty-five-hundred.
That's what I said. But on, the other, the other way, with, with the, the previous one, if he built a nine-thousand, a ten-thousand square-foot house, he could have built up to ten-thousand square-foot of structure. This, yours limits it to eighty-five-hundred.
True, I guess I was just going with the intent, I assumed he was not going to build a ten-thousand-square-foot house, it was going to be a four-thousand-square-foot house or something, but-
Got it. All right, so Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just have a comment, with all due respect, I, I, I'm sure you do a lot of quality work, as some of the council members have mentioned, but I just have an issue with the fact that this is a change, substantial change from the plan development, so I just cannot support this proposal, so that is the reason, just wanted to give you that statement.
All right, so, okay, so I'm fixing to call for a vote on the amendment, this is to limit the total square footage of the accessory structures to less than eighty-five-hundred square feet. All-
Eighty-five or less?
Eighty-five hun- limit it to eighty-five-hundred or less. Thank you. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have your hand up?
Mayor.
Councilmember Hinoza Smith?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having trouble following what, exactly what we added on the second one, that amends what Mark's current proposal is.
That's quite all right, it's an amendment to limit the total square footage of all the accessory structures to no more than eighty-five-hundred square feet, less than eighty-five-hundred square feet.
Understood, okay. And, you know, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a comment here, if you'll allow me, Mayor, and that's to say, like Councilmember June and Terry, I've worked with you for many, many years, as I've been on council, and I, I do believe and I know that you do great work, and really, really struggling with the changes that we have before us, and I, I see them as material changes, and just really struggling with so much of the unknown, right? Like, there's, there's, that's just coming forward, that it's like, it may or may not happen, we're really not sure, it could be A, it could be B, it could be a combination or something completely different. And I, I'm just, I'm struggling, this, this is also in a, in a, in a relocation in the center and the entrance of our city, and so, again, no matter how this goes, I, I wish you the best of luck, this is a, I mean, you, you have been a resident of our community for a very long time, but I, I cannot support this, so I just wanted to let you know that as well.
Okay, to, to reiterate, we are only voting on the amendment, which is to limit the total number of accessory square footage buildings to less than eighty-five-hundred square feet.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Long, Carol Nevels, in favor, opposed? Sorry. Hinoza Smith, John, Matthew Hill, the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. So we're back to the original motion made by Councilmember Hill to approve item number ten with the conditions set forth by the planning and zoning, and in addition to set a minimum square footage of the homes in all phases to a minimum of twenty-eight-hundred square feet, to require that the total square footage of all the accessory buildings be less than that of the main structure, and that the square footage of the accessory structures is as presented in the PowerPoint during this section, session of the council. Is there any discussion on this item? All right, all in favor?
Long, Carol, Nevels, Matthew Hill, in favor, opposed? Hinoza Smith, John, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time this evening, it's been a long evening, been a lot of good discussion, appreciate the comments. These are planning, or zoning issues are never easy, especially in plan to development, so, Mr. Holmes, thank you very much. All right. Counsel, we're on to item number eleven. This is administr- administrative in nature, we did have a member of our library board who missed three meetings, therefore by the, the section two-point-one-dash-four-E of our Code of Ordinances, we must declare his position vacant. This is the position for Sekar Kathem. So there is really no debate on this, item number twelve is to fill that position back, so we are declaring a vacancy, and then we'll fill it with the next discussion, with the next item. So all in favor of item number eleven? Oh, I'm-
Do we need a motion, or is it just already happened?
Consider, consider, consider declaring a vacancy.
Mayor, if you would, if you would take them.
Let's take a motion. We'll take a motion. Councilmember Neville?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve agenda item eleven and consider declaring, and declaring a vacancy on the library board pursuant to section two-dash-one-dash-four-E of the Code of Ordinances.
Thank you for keeping me straight. Do I have a second? Our, second by Councilmember Long, is there any discussion? Right, all in favor?
Long, Hinoza Smith, Carol Nevels, John, Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
All right, item number twelve is deliberate and consider an appointment of a vacancy on the library board pursuant to section two-point, two-dash-one-dash-four-dash-E Code of Ordinances. Counsel, for your consideration. Councilmember Nevels?
Thank you, Mayor. I approve to appoint Sekar Kathem to fill the vacancy on the library board pursuant, pursuant to section two-dot-one-dot-four-E of the Code of Ordinances, agenda item twelve.
Thank you, item, or do I have a second? Councilmember Long, all in favor?
Long, Hinoza Smith, Carol Nevels, John, Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
All right. What's that? All right. What's that? All right, item number 13 is our city manager report, updates and future agendas. Ms. Chaveta?
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of time, I'm going to try to make this a little shorter than I normally would. Today I have a water update report for the council and the community, and I'm going to apologize to Kent for reducing some of the information here right away, but there's a lot here. So with the, with the extreme weather conditions that we've had lately and the demand for water being close to reaching our maximum capacity, the city is asking the public to please help us with water conservation. Since the beginning of June, water demand in Capel has increased by over eight million gallons per day. Our highest daily demand the last week was seventeen point seven million gallons, and we hit that on two separate days. The city's maximum contracted water supply is eighteen point five million gallons, and we want to avoid increasing our maximum supply because it will negatively impact long-term utility cost and rates. So the trend over the last month has been that one or both of the triggers that we have in place could be met this week, and those triggers are stage-two requirements where we exceed ninety percent of our maximum supply, or we're unable to fill our, fill our, fill our ground storage tanks for two consecutive days, and then stage-three is the other trigger where we exceed ninety-five percent of the maximum supply for five days, and we're unable to fill our tanks for three consecutive days. So we're getting fairly close to the possibility of those things happening. Some of the things that we've done in the city is we've reduced our watering schedule, which residents may notice with increased hotspots in the parks, facilities, and medians. We've also reached out to CISD, and they have reduced their watering schedule in cooperation with the city. In addition to that, we sent emails to the Chamber of Commerce, HOAs, and businesses directly to request their assistance. So we're asking everybody to help with this. We're currently in stage-one for water conservation, meaning there's no watering allowed between 10 and 6. And to avoid moving into stage-two, we'd need help from our customers to reduce consumption by 20%. And doing one of the following will help meet that goal. Use the seasonal adjustment on your irrigation controller and set it to 80%. Reduce the number of days watered by one, preferably by eliminating Monday or Friday because those are our heaviest use days. Go back to how you were watering three weeks ago. If you need to fill your pool, spread that activity over several days. Hand watering is still allowed and preferable to automatic irrigation, and we ask people to be mindful of domestic use. For example, don't leave water running while you're shaving or brushing. Only have it watering, running when you need, when it's needed. We've been appealing to customers through our normal communication channels and social media, but we will also be sending out a direct request to customers using Everbridge tomorrow morning. If we can achieve these reductions, we'll be able to avoid implementing stage-two or three requirements. I want to also give an update on power service. Encore has, you've heard ERCOT put some, put some information out about reducing power, and Encore has reached out to echo their appeal for conservation. They can, people can help by turning off unnecessary lights and equipment, by turning your thermostat up two to three, two or three degrees, to set your programmable, programmable, I'm getting tired too, excuse me, thermostats to higher temperatures when no one is home. Use fans. Limit use of large appliances. If you cook indoors, use a microwave or a slow cooker. Close your blinds and drapes during late afternoon, and schedule pool pumps to run in the early morning or overnight hours. Very quickly, beltline update. We have utility relocations and installations continuing from Dividend to Hackberry. Subgrade preparation continues on the inside lanes from Southwestern to Wrangler, and paving continues from Wrangler to St. Sberry. Roadway restriping. Our contractors' crews were impacted by COVID, and they had to delay the start of work for next week. And our plan is to restripe Denton Tap, MacArthur East Beltline, and four major intersections around the city. And finally, there has been a budget calendar change. The budget hearing to adopt the budget and tax rate that was originally scheduled for August 9th will be moved to August 23rd. Thank you.
Did we, did you guys catch that the budget meeting has been moved from the 9th to the 23rd? Okay, so it was at the, at the request of, so that we could have a quorum, a council present? So I want to go back to something that Vicki was talking about, just so everybody understands. She's, she was talking about water rates. If we exceed the eighteen and a half million gallons of water usage for five days in a row, or is it one day? Yeah, so if we exceed eighteen and a half million gallons five days in a row, then we are automatically assessed a rate increase by Dallas Water Utilities that is valid or enforced for five years. So we start, you know, we start talking about our water rates, and there's that base rate that we pay. That's that base rate that we're talking about. So when she was talking about how important it is to reduce water usage, it's not just because we're at a short-term period of crisis, it's because it's going to impact us for the next five years. So it, yes, it is, we are in a, in a very high-demand water usage time, but it's going to impact the city and our residents for the next five years if we exceed that, that limit. That's why we have, you know, we've been in stage-one, we have stage-two, we actually have stage-three and four after that. So this is, if you, N5, sorry. I hope we don't get past one. If you have any, you know, please use your, your contacts to let them know that this is, this is getting pretty serious. This hasn't been this bad since 2011, and we got very, very close to going into, to the enhanced phases at that point. All right, thank you for your report. Mayor and council reports, Theater Capel presents A Little Shop of Horrors. I'm going to reduce this one as well. Weekends, July 15th through the 31st, Fridays and Saturdays at 8:00 PM and Sundays at 2:30. It's a, it's been a 30-year-running Broadway show about, and it's very, very funny, very sad, and enjoyed by everyone. Then, our 2022 Summit Music Workshop features everything you wanted to know about singing but were afraid to ask. This consists of show, of sessions on July 18th, which is music-making skills; July 25th, historic context and personal connections; August 1st, elements of music; August 8th, ensemble skills. Tickets for this are $25 per class or $90 for all classes. For information for this and all the other shows, visit the Capel Arts Center. Item number 15, public service announcements concerning items of community interest. Anybody have any public service announcements? Seeing none, there was no action necessary from the executive session. However, we still have two items of work session left to do, so we're going to recess from regular session of the Capel City Council at 10:55 and convene into work session. All right, we are reconvening into work session. The time is 10:57. We have three items left. We are going to defer the discussion on the citizen survey, probably because our consultant is not. Okay.
It'll still lead our timeline. If we put it first on the agenda.
We have a discussion regarding the boards and commissions attendance policy. Well, you can, it doesn't matter. Okay, this is item E, a discussion regarding the revenue recovery program. We're going to have to ask Kevin and Cliff to lead us.
Actually, Cliff can stay because he is not in the geographic area that is eligible. Yes, this is for, you're not eligible. Thank you, Mayor, council. This will be very, it should be very brief. So this is just a review and a confirmation to allow us to hear some clarification from you all in terms of the categories that you wanted to see as eligible for the revenue recovery grant, which is for our, to mitigate and offset the impact for the South Beltline construction. What we heard is highlighted on your sheet here. It is front and back, so as you look at that, there is, so these are the, this was the list that we provided at the last meeting for the eligible categories and the businesses that were within that category. And we want to confirm with the council related to the items, our box did not catch number six, but the, the businesses under educational services and fitness were eliminated from eligibility based on the conversation around, you could have a membership, at which point then that wasn't necessarily dependent on drive-by traffic. So at this point, that's, that's where we left that conversation from our last meeting, and I would like just to give council opportunity to help me and us clarify where you would like to see us go in terms of eligibility for those two categories.
I was still reading the list.
I was gonna, so last time, I think, when we discussed this, we went through this list. Like, this is the original list, and we went through and started taking out some of those. However, subsequent to that discussion is when we expanded the size materially of all these. We went from, what, 100 to 300 on this one, as well as we went bigger on the other one, but we materially increased the size of these. So, but we never circled back around, I guess, to confirm that we wanted to limit this list. And so my thought is since we had materially increased the size of the pool, we were looking to expand who was eligible for this, and so by limiting in this, I guess, I felt like we were going the opposite way. So I guess, I say all that to say, I guess I would be in favor of allowing this original list to all stand since we increased the pool, was, is my thought.
But, okay, so just to follow up, since we didn't, so if we do take out these that we talked about last time, is that, does that mean that we won't have enough businesses to, I guess, exhaust the, the additional funding that we are providing? Is that, is that what we're understanding?
So, so we've allocated $300,000 for this.
Right.
And that is $5,000, that's 60 businesses.
There's 82 on here, is that?
There are 83.
Eighty-three.
Is this 83, including the ones that were struck?
So 83 would be total if we did not strike them. If we strike them, we would be looking at 67.
So there's still sufficient?
I guess my thought is I would rather that self, businesses self-select, I guess. I guess I would rather not narrow the field of who is eligible since we expanded. I mean, and, and I, as I, I got to thinking about this, we really, we really did talk about that first, and then we talked about increasing the pool. Originally, we were just still stuck at 100. So in the spirit of wanting to keep the field as wide as possible, I guess I would be in favor of keeping the entire list as originally slated. So that's, and that's my rationale, because we expanded the pool.
But what is it, we get 80, 83 applications?
Yeah. Well, agreed, but I guess I, I don't know that we will. Maybe I'm wrong about that. But, but otherwise, we, so you said 67, if you cut these out?
Yes.
So that's still more than, that's still more than what we have funding for, and I guess I would rather, I guess I would rather us not select who can and who can't. I would rather keep the field wide and let them, let them sort of self-select, I guess is my thought.
But the whole reasoning behind it last time, I mean, I like what Mark said, right? Because some of those monthly, I guess, paid members are not the walk-in. I think, I think, I agree with them on that. And I have another question, like, for example, 7-Eleven, right? Is that individually owned? Do we know that? Or is that like corporate-owned?
I do not know if that's franchise or corporate.
Because if it is corporate, I don't think they qualify, right?
I think they do under the way.
I mean, the way we structured it, they would, because it is around just mitigating the impact of the construction. If, if we want to talk, revisit around eligibility, we can have that conversation, but at this point, they would be eligible for.
Not that it might, okay.
Well, I guess, we're talking about getting $300,000 into businesses along that stretch, and I guess I would rather not limit who is, I mean, eligible. Because I, I would agree with you. We can go down, because I'm actually the one, I think, that brought up 7-Eleven, because I had a little bit of issue with if it's corporate-owned, that they shouldn't get paid. But how many times do you nitpick all these? I mean, we can spend a lot of resources and time sort of nitpicking who does and who doesn't get it, picking winners and losers. That's why I'd rather, since we expanded the pool, let's keep those eligible broad also. That's my thought.
I have a question. You may keep mentioning expanding the pool from what to what?
100 and 300.
So $1,000?
The funding amount. He's talking about the funding amount that council allocated. Initially, y'all had allocated 100,000. At the last meeting, y'all added another 200 to make this program a $300,000 program.
Okay, now I have a question. Are these people already applied, or this is the list you have?
This is just the list, and so this is, this is the staggered program, so this is the one that would roll out after this. So this would be, originally, we were going to be sending out letters. We would have sent letters out this week. It'll now be pushed out another month.
Can you have more people eligible for this program than you don't have in this paper?
Unless council expands the geographic limits of what we want to consider, this is, this is the list.
This is the final list?
Yes.
Is eligible for this?
Unless they want, unless we want to consider additional geographic limits.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
So one thing I do want to mention, I know, for example, like 31 Delaney Salon, you meant, you put it as one, but I know for a fact in there, they're rented out with booths, so there's like maybe six or seven individual owners. Right, so that, and I don't know how many others, like even the spa in there, I don't know if they're actually booths or rented or not, but that could be.
That's why I'm asking.
That's even more businesses that could be applying.
They have to have a storefront. So in order to be eligible, you've got to have a storefront. So if I just said renting a booth, I do not have that, that's not my storefront. That is not, I'm renting that booth.
Huh, okay.
So it's not like, if there's, if there's 10 people in that salon, each individual stall is not eligible for $5,000.
Even though they have their own, I guess.
Correct. They're, by virtue of them being in the storefront, so whoever owns that storefront, that they're leasing that through.
They're the ones who are eligible.
That's who's eligible.
So, I'll, I'll give you another example. So that's one. Second example on number 26 is Shanti Gram Wellness Program, right? You see 26?
I do.
Okay, there is another one similar to that called Ayurvedic Treatment Plan. I don't see them here.
If they're under medical, they are, medical is not included here.
No, it's not. It's the same thing.
I'm not familiar with what that is. Where are they located?
You know the CISD building? Next to CISD building is Ayurveda Treatment.
Okay, I, I do not know them. If they're, if they're not addressed on Denton Tap, they are not on this list.
They are on Denton Tap.
Okay, well, then if you'll send me their, what's the name of it? I something?
I'll spell it out for you.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
It's the same type of treatment as 26's. It's a comparative place. Both are Indian-owned place with Ayurveda treatment. They do like a massage.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't see their name here.
So, going back to what Don was talking about, I'm still with the agreement with what Mark said about last time about distinguishing between a membership type of business versus a walk-in type of business. So, I'm okay with, you know, taking out what's been crossed out here.
And the question about whether it's corporate or not, chances are, corporate is not even going to get the notice. I mean, it'd be buried somewhere deep in the bowels of Seven-Eleven or Chevron or whoever, but if it's, if it's a franchise, that owner's open in that mail, and I'm pretty sure he's going to respond to it.
That's very true.
So I think it's naturally going to weed it out there.
Yeah.
I don't know that for a fact, but.
I mean, do we?
Go ahead.
Do we know for sure, like, the Educational Services, that they're wouldn't, I mean, would they not choose to go somewhere else that's not on Beltline? I mean, that, I guess, how do we know for sure that?
You don't.
Somebody?
There's absolutely no way there's gonna be a guaranteed certainty on any of these. I mean, it's just not.
I guess, well, I'm reiterating, but I guess that's why I go back to.
To everybody's point, I can go down here and nitpick any one of these and say, well, they only accept my car by reservation. I can't just drive my car in and they'll fix it. So, I mean, that's, there's every one of these is gonna fall into some kind of category like that.
I mean, even Texas Family Fitness, I mean, you, you're right, it's a membership, but maybe somebody doesn't sign up for a membership here for the next year, because it's on Beltline, so they're gonna go to the one over on MacArthur and Beltline or something. You know, they're gonna choose another one for the next year that they might have chosen, you know, to do a membership at Texas Family or something. I mean, that's, that's why, I guess, leaving the expanded, with expanded pool of money, leaving the list expanded is, I guess, makes sense to me.
I said this was gonna be quick.
I, I did. I apologize for misleading the council.
Well, I mean, we can ask the quick question, I mean, can we get to four with this list the way it is?
Can you do what?
Can you get to four?
Four.
Nods.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
I'm okay with this.
Is Brianna gone? Oh, nothing's Brianna.
Brianna, are you with us?
She's checked out.
Yeah. She's out, though. Does she have a list?
I can't hear her.
Are you okay, are you okay with this?
I apologize. Brianna, I'm sorry, I did not email you that list. I, I apologize. No, she did not.
But we're talking about your.
It's not there.
Can you see it?
Come on, the guy's not there.
Oh, yeah.
We're talking about the original list, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark, you're okay with the eighty-three? Is that what I just heard you say?
For the strikeouts.
The strike, with the strikeouts, it's sixty-seven.
Six, you're okay with the sixty-seven?
Yes.
Bijou, sixty-seven or eighty-three?
Sixty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-three?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, sixty-seven. Sixty-seven.
He struck four more out.
He did that to be on purpose. He did that on purpose.
He found four more he didn't like.
I want to make sure you're paying attention. Sixty-seven. Six, sixty-seven. Brianna?
Sixty-seven.
Thank you. Sixty-seven at three.
Thank you.
All right, next.
Stop talking. All right. Discussion regarding boards and commissions attendance policy. Ashley.
All right.
Exactly. We need to board the commissions before we go forward. Were people like to swear in the new members tonight?
Uh, no, ma'am, just the appointments were being made, and so we're actually gonna hold a swearing-in ceremony separate and apart from this.
Thank you.
What, when is that gonna be? Next?
Um, so they're, they're not actually gonna get sworn in under, at a council meeting. They're going to be sworn in at, we're probably gonna hold a meeting for those two boards to have a joint meeting. That way, we can get them sworn in as well as meet Bob and review the ordinance together. I believe we've tentatively. Do we?
And review the ethics training.
Yes, absolutely.
The ethics.
Tentatively scheduled for the third or the second week of August, but we haven't done.
To be sworn in, okay.
Yeah. So, we actually haven't told the members that yet, so. All right. Sorry about that. Okay. So tonight, I'm here to discuss and seek direction from you all regarding the attendance policy for the boards, commissions, and committees. This item is in response to you all hearing about this on May 24th, and city council gave feedback as to what you wanted included in the attendance policy, so I'm here to go back over those points with you to see if we have clear direction, and that way an ordinance can be brought at your next meeting. Okay. So, at our last discussion, Bob provided the, this definition of an excused absence. And it covers illness, any sort of medical condition or procedure, attendance of a funeral, jury duty, vacation, participation, or observance of a religious holiday, or work-related activity. But the important thing to note is that advanced notification is required to either the chair of the board, the staff liaison, or even city secretary's office. So, any sort of advanced notification, that is the key to this, this policy. Before I move on, is there any questions about this definition? Is there anything you would like to see added to this definition?
Who determines that the request meets those, meet those criteria?
That is a great question, Mayor. So, to my next.
City, city.
No. To my, to my next slide, Mayor, if I may. No, that's a, that's a great question. So, we do want to put up at the top that city council has the authority to review any members' attendance, but this is going to be heard at the board level. So, if a board member is sick, and you give advanced notice to your chair or your staff liaison or even this office, you would hear this at the next board meeting. If the absence meets the definition of an, of an excused absence, a majority vote is required to excuse that absence. Does that answer your question, Mayor?
Not really.
Okay. So if it meets the definition, the board will have to hear that on their agenda, and then also, the vote will be recorded into the historical record of the minutes.
I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that in lieu of meeting, at the next meeting, that it be reviewed at the meeting that the member is absent.
But you, you might not know why.
Then it's gotta be in their letter. It's gotta be in their note that they give to the chair or to the liaison.
So, if I'm, if I might insert, there might be an issue with the posting requirements of the agenda. So if the person is absent or becomes ill the night of, or the afternoon of?
You could have, on every agenda, you could have a roll call.
Okay.
Bob shaking his head.
My concern would be the posting requirement, but Bob can.
This is gonna get, I, I've, yeah, I've got, this is gonna get, okay, never mind.
What, what, Mayor, what's your, yeah, if we know why you want it done that way versus do it at the next meeting, what's the problem? Just, I, I have to know your concern, though, so we can address it.
So my concern is the bias of the members that are voting on it are not gonna vote against a member that's sitting there in front of them.
Okay. That's fair.
I, it's really hard. If John was missed last meeting and he said he was off Galavantin and Timbuktu on a, on a company trip, it's really hard for me to look at him in the face and say, oh, I think that's unexcused.
Well, we can ask him to step out. I mean, Bob doesn't have control of asking him to step out.
It's just, it's just a human nature thing. It's really hard to vote against somebody when they're in front of them.
And this has gotta be a, and this has gotta be a very fair and unbiased decision. Don?
I might go a step further and say, should the board be the one deciding who the excuse?
Not really. I don't think so.
I mean, or should we just make it the staff liaison, or, I mean, somebody, for the some reason you stated.
Staff would have responsibility.
Well, that would be, maybe staff didn't want it.
No, staff would want the responsibility. The only other people that would be qualified to do it is the council, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna induce or, what's the word? Require you to, to take on that additional responsibility. It's ridiculous to burden the council with that.
Okay. City Secretary.
But, Mayor, Mayor, to the point, these are your appointees, these are your board members.
Yeah.
So that is, that is something that I wanted to mention, is that as the appointing body, you have the authority to review any members' attendance if an issue were to come about that the board is unable to vote, or there's, there's rumors of somebody being at JMAX while they sent an excuse. I mean, that was brought up last time, so I just.
So, I, I understand your concern about voting in front of the person, and there might be some bias, but at the same time, they know their duties, so are they, and we're hoping that they understand that they have to vote the right way, not because they're being influenced by fellow board members. So, I, I, I mean, I think that, you know.
Could it be as, as much as, like, when Cliff had to leave the room?
Yeah.
Um, so he wouldn't influence the discussion?
So, yeah, give, give, we're giving them the, I guess, the authority to do this, and I believe that they're gonna do it the right way, rather than being swayed by, by a member or another.
I'd be okay with that. It relieves some of the pressure. Don?
Could it not be more just binary, that the definition is up there, and it either qualifies or it doesn't, and if questions come up, then it comes to us or something? I mean, does the board really have to go through the exercise? Because those are relatively straightforward. I mean, you're sick, or you're on a trip, or, and it's real binary, and if it gets gray, then it comes forward to us or something. But just make it real, because you're only talking about two excused absences, I'm probably jumping ahead, but.
You are. You are.
Go back to, no, result.
Regardless.
The only benefits conditioner service, attendance of funeral. See, the vacation.
Why are you vacationing? You know, you gotta pay vacation.
I mean, those are pretty.
Sometimes they make it around, but.
I, I do my best to schedule my vacation where I don't miss a meeting.
Well, you would hope they did the same, right?
You still have the ability to take a non-excused absence as a vacation. I mean, it's not like one non-excuse and you're out.
Yeah. I mean, the only kind of gray thing, I think, is work-related activity. Oh, I had to go to happy hour for the office.
That's an activity.
Team building.
Yeah.
Team building.
Yeah, exactly.
And I do want to say that because we are doing this orientation, and I understand that this is a new policy, but we do plan on going over this policy at our orientation in December when this does come about. So we will offer training on this policy as well, whatever it is that you all decide.
I think, leave it, leave it up to the board, you know, and I think they'll do it. I have confidence of doing it the right way, with the person maybe, you know, leaving, since they are, they are discussing about that person, so.
Do you, do you have more presentations?
Yes, I do.
Okay, let's.
So, at the, like I said.
You ready to move on there?
At the next meeting of the board orientation, the board will consider if absence meets that definition, and again, like I said, a majority vote is required to excuse the absence, and so.
So, can you go back?
Of course.
I would like to add on the item two.
Board members must give advance notice?
Just be very specific, semicolon, if advanced notice is not given, they will be considered unexcused.
Okay.
But I mean, someone got a car accident right before the meeting, and you have to go, and you just don't have time, and that could be exactly what happened.
But you still get multiple excused absences.
You need to drag your hurting self in here, and you report.
I'm sure you will.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's fine, I mean.
All right. So, this is, so walk, walk through this with me very slowly. So, the three regularly scheduled meetings, that is actually supposed to say regular or special-called meetings, so I apologize, it should read all the same throughout the entire bullet. So if a board member is absent for three regularly or special-called meetings, or if a board member is absent for 25% of the regular or special-called meetings within a 12-month period, excused or unexcused, the position will automatically be considered for review by city council. So, this is a combination of either excused or unexcused. So, three, three is the magic number, and so if you don't give advanced notification and it does become an unexcused absence, that's your one. And so then if you get COVID and your kid gets sick, that's three. So three will automatically trigger an agenda item on city council's agenda for you all to consider the facts, whether we received advanced notification or not. So I'll stop here.
And then this will prevent us from having to basically put an agenda item, automatically vote somebody off, and then we can just consider or discuss, oh, no, this was excused, here's the reason why, we're, we're good.
The, it, the purpose is context, for you to understand exactly why this person was absent, and for you to be able to review it, and then either declare a vacancy or just keep, keep on going, I guess.
Don?
The excuses don't actually gain you anything.
No, they don't. Except that they give you leverage when the city council reviews it.
You would have two excused absences and an unexcused, and therefore, you might not get booted because of that.
Yeah.
So it's really, then I go back a little bit, can't we make this, the excused or unexcused, just a binary decision, that this is the reason? Because if it really doesn't gain you anything, do we need to have a big agenda item in the board? You see what I'm saying? I mean, is it, if, if it's not really giving you anything, except I'm gonna check the box that said I was sick, do we really need to discuss it during the board meeting? It'll get discussed when they hit three and it comes here.
But they still need to write the letter.
Agreed, agreed. They need to give notice or something, but that's what I'm saying, is just making a binary, you know, they contact state, staff liaison, or Ashley, or somebody. Are you not allowed to talk?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
That would make this really complicated.
Uh-huh, that's what I'm afraid of.
Bijou? Yeah, exact point. I just want to be very simple. If you miss three meetings, it comes to council, and that's it. And we read the excuse on, we can determine if it's excused that we should do that or we shouldn't do that. Why put burden on the board members to do this?
I agree with that. I mean, I, I think the definition is, is clear.
Yeah.
So take out board review.
Yeah, just comes to us. We make the decision.
Yeah, after number three, it comes to us.
But they, it's stressed they need advanced notice, right? They need to make sure that they contact somebody, right?
It'll be there, but even if they do, if there's three, it'll still come to us anyway.
Right.
It's simple. Make it very simple.
Process, what I'm hearing y'all say.
Right. Hang on. Brianna?
Well, and I, I'll have to say, it's not like what you said, I think we're making this complicated, and I feel like we're seeing something that's not necessarily broken. I mean, we, we've had a couple of outliers, but, and we've dealt with them. That's what we've had, it's been. Um, we've had a couple of outliers, and we've dealt with them before, and I don't know, it becomes a bigger issue than we can address it, but I just, I just do feel like we're making this very complicated, and we're moving that extreme.
Kevin was saying you have a beautiful hair.
Did not say that. But you do, but I did not say that.
I think just taking out that step, you know, the voting on the next meeting simplifies it greatly, and make it very simple.
Take out the board review. Take out the board review?
You got the definition of excuse, notice, you got to notify, and after three, it comes us.
My, my only suggestion is if you, if that person misses two meetings, send them a letter saying, hey, you are on the verge of getting kicked out of the board.
Yes, sir.
They're getting, on the verge of being reviewed by council, not kicked out.
Yeah, or, yeah, my language is poor, but what about my language?
Yes, sir.
They already have, they already have the notification with the, all the, right, training?
No.
They would be informed at the orientation, yes.
They already know, and they're signing.
But just a reminder, hey, you missed two, if you miss one more, it's going to go to the council.
You're going to get tattled on.
Mayor?
Mr. Hager?
So, so I understand, because we need to change the ordinance, because every board and commission that's appointed has the language, if you miss three or more meetings or twenty-five percent in a twelve-month period, a vacancy will be declared. So what, do you want one provision in the ordinance that addresses all boards and commissions?
Yes, yes.
And one where this, okay?
Now, you need to.
If you miss three or more or twenty-five percent of meetings or special-call meetings in a twelve-month period, your attendance will be reviewed by the council, and the council may declare, may, is permissive, declare a vacancy.
That's correct.
That's it.
And.
And in that way, we'll give excused or unexcused, so if you give one of those, you all could then have a discussion about whether they were excused or unexcused, and other adequacies, and therefore their continued service would weigh with you all if you felt that there was legitimate reason for their absence.
Mark? Yeah, I think it's important to put in there what Bob said, so people will know what the ramifications are. Um, not that they're considered for review, that they may be booted out. I think that's part of what Ashley's doing with the orientation on all the boards and commissions. Right, but it should be in writing, so there's no question.
So it would be considered for review and may declare a vacancy, or considered for review by City Council and may declare a vacancy, or may be declared vacant.
May declare.
Yeah, make it permissive instead of mandatory, and then you could discuss to avoid what you had to deny. Right now it's mandatory, and it's ministerial, if you miss three, you're gone. You want, if you miss three, you got to come to us, and if it's excused, then you don't have to declare a vacancy, you could, you know, spank it and send you to your room, which is so disconcerting. Because now it's mandatory.
Don?
Excused absence.
Is there a? Is there a, so is there anything, any magic to the two excused absences then?
No.
We'll just get rid of that, right?
Right, that's correct, yes, it's just.
It's just really a designation at this point, right?
Yes, that is.
Okay, that makes sense.
I, it just provides context, which I think is important for us.
I'm just glad you could.
But I, you know, I'd like to, if you had three unexcused absences.
That's context.
Would that be an automatic dismissal by the council?
We can discuss that.
Discuss that.
Well, you can still bring it to council, and it's probably going to be a yes, right?
Yeah.
At that point.
I would hope so. Yes. Okay. You could understand one, maybe two, but.
Well, to keep it simple, do you still just bring it to council, and that's the context?
Yes.
There's one process.
There you go. All right, do you have?
Put three unexcused on consent.
Everybody?
I do have a question.
Just real quick. Vicky, Vicky has a question.
About the process, make sure I, that we all understand. So if someone is, is going to miss a meeting and they have an excuse, you want them to send a letter to the liaison or the City Secretary?
Email or Chair.
Or email. Email.
Some sort of, a text even, like some sort of communication.
Not, not a text.
We need something that we can, well, we can.
They need, they need, they need something they can put in the phone.
We don't have the technology to print off a text?
But if it's short notice, I mean, you would definitely tell them to pick up the phone and follow up with the email, right?
Some kind of communication, telling us that they're going to be out for a meeting, and that serves as the excuse, and we'll document, we'll keep documenting.
Yes, ma'am, so, um, yes, we will keep documenting.
Okay. Is that what I'm hearing y'all say? Or, if they're, they're going to contact liaison, maybe board chair, maybe City Secretary?
Do you want to be in that?
Yes.
I can serve that.
Okay, so any of the three?
Yes.
Board chair, liaison, or City Secretary?
It'll eventually come to you anyway, right? Because you.
It needs to make its way to me, yes.
You track.
We are, we are the trackers of absences.
Their meeting in the evening, she may be gone, and they would never know that people are going to show up, so it's got to be someone who's going to, supposed to be at the meeting. I agree, as, that's why I was thinking the liaison or board chair. And then they should forward that email or, um. To her. Yeah.
Okay, take the City Secretary out of it.
Yes. Agreed with that.
Are we clear then, we're clear?
I don't mean to smother the pod, but you said no text, so even if we were to do like a screenshot of the text and then send it in email, I don't mean to.
I don't care.
But I think that will happen.
I vote yes for text.
That's fine. Millennial.
One hundred percent.
All day. And instantly, he's going to.
Just make sure you spell it correctly, Kevin.
I'm, I'm doing it on the TikTok page.
And song and dance, and song and dance.
All right, are we done?
Good.
All right, the time is eleven thirty-five, we are adjourned from work session. Are you sure? No?
We have to go back out there one more time.
Good evening, the time is eleven thirty-six PM, we have adjourned from work session, we are convening into the regular session of the Kappel City Council, and with there being no further business before this body, we are adjourned at eleven thirty-six PM.